Good evening. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Good evening. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me just mention that this meeting is being recorded for future viewing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of announcements. One pertaining to battery recycling. We paused the battery recycling program at the Township Building. The vendor for the program is out of stock of recycling buckets, and the shipper will no longer accept the buckets for recycling. So the vendor is looking for alternatives for shipping. In the meantime, we recommend residents take their batteries to Staples, which it's free there, Home Depot, it's free, or Batteries and Bulbs, they charge $2 for one pound. The Wall That Heals will soon... Okay, that's one of our... That scared me. The Wall That Heals will be here very soon, and we are honored to be hosting it from July 10th to July 13th, 24 hours a day until 2:00 PM on Sunday, the 13th. So please plan on visiting the Moving Memorial and the Mobile Education Center in just two and a half weeks from now. Follow our social media channels for updates and additional information, and later on today, our Township Manager is gonna give a couple of more updates on that. Item number four is public comment. Oh. Supervisor Beth has a little announcement she wants to make. Recognizing Pride Month.
Wonderful, thank you. During June, which is Pride Month, and every month, we want to recognize the importance of recognizing and respecting the LGBTQ members of our community. We know that pride is more than just a celebration, it's a reminder of the ongoing work towards equality, inclusion, and dignity for all people, regardless of who they love and how they identify. Montgomery Township is stronger when everyone feels welcome, safe, and valued. So let's continue fostering our community where diversity is embraced and all residents can live authentically and without fear. Thank you. Happy Pride.
Hi, thank you. Item number four is public comment. Any persons wishing to make public comment during this meeting on any items not listed in the agenda may do so at this time. You can come up to the mic, state your name. Where you live?
George Eddie from One Night Cove Circle. Want to know what the progress was on the calming measures on Gray's Lane? I saw on there that our manager spoke with the engineering firm on the virtual meeting. Wanted to get an update on that, if it wasn't gonna be addressed tonight.
Are you speaking about the other company that we were going to?
Yeah.
Okay, and we got a cost on it.
Yeah, in the last meeting you talked about Officer Jenkins was gonna reach out to the highway patrol, the Penn Dot.
So one of the things, Carol, I don't know if you have anything to add, we had talked about it our last meeting, that there were a couple of things that we talked about, we just said that we were gonna push it though until after the wall, after the meeting, because there's some, you know, things that we need to reach out to. And just ask, because we have just such a busy time right now. She, that was an ask to us, and we were okay with waiting until we finish everything with the wall within another couple of weeks.
Sounds okay.
Okay.
Officer Jenkins is reaching out to Penn Dot, though, to see what the study of Gray's Lane would look like, and if it meets the needs of what the Board is looking for. Additionally, Solicitor gave me information from Swarthmore Borough, what they do when they get a complaint that comes into the borough about a traffic issue or speeding issue, and I'm gonna compile those and then present them to the Board at a later meeting, so that you can make a decision. That would be for future claims, but Officer Jenkins, he's looking into this with Penn Dot to see if the scope that they'll do meets the needs of the Township.
And I think that was the piece that we said we'll wait until after the wall.
Also, to just address that question, I know that we've also been doing, they've been doing patrols, making sure that people are... If they're speeding, we have our highway safety, making sure that they are doing that. So that's in place, as well as there are lawn signs available to every resident for free through the Police Department. The lawn signs were made specifically for Township that say, "Please drive as if your kids live here." So slow down, and we're hoping that people can put those in their yards where there's a problem and where there may be an issue. Hopefully that will catch attention to drivers and remind them to slow down for the purpose of safety.
Okay, I think those were some of the items we talked about.
Yeah, it's, I'm actually off for the summer, I'm a teacher. So I've actually noticed there have been patrols when I've been out. There's a significantly dropped off since the last meeting we had, or last meeting here. So wanted to bring that up, because it's, it is concerning when I walk in my six-year-old and 14-month-old through the neighborhood, so.
Well, thanks for sharing, because I know, we talked for a while. We had a long, good conversation, it's a good conversation. But I do know that, and I'm happy to hear you say that you're home now, so you can see, because your wife shared all that she was seeing on a daily basis, and so it was enough to know that we're not done with this yet.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number five. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sanjukta, and I am a resident of Hampton Green, the condominium community right on 202 and... Goodness, Nap Road. Yes, thank you. So basically, I'm part of HOA, and we have 110 units in Hampton Green. So the roads, the internal roads are owned by HOA. Now, one thing is, this is just a question that was, you know, just came up at our AGM, so I wanted to come here and listen, get an answer from you guys. And, you know, I can go back and share with the residents. We pay taxes, but everything else is, the owners is on us for maintaining the roads, starting from small, you know, A to Z, everything is on us. So is there anything that we can get from the Township? Because, you know, we pay full taxes, there's no compromise on that, but at the same time, we are also not getting any benefits out of this.
So your real estate taxes do go to the Township roads that are in our community. They also go to our police, which is 24/7/365. They go to our fire department. We also make a contribution annually to our emergency medical services, and they have a building here on our campus. When your neighborhood came in, they requested to have private roads. So the Township, we don't have anything to do with that, but we do, your tax dollars go to maintain all the other roads in the Township that your neighbors use.
Yes, okay, I get, I did come by a few weeks before, and I did take a map of our community, and... So one concern that we heard at the AGM is if... So this background also, there is, so we were residents at Buckingham Township at Bucks County before, and the unit there, which is Arbor Point, they had the same issue. And later on, the Township took over the roads. And that way, what happened is the residents were kind of released from, you know, maintenance and all that stuff. In the long run, if there is a proposal, do you think the Township will honor that decision?
That would be a board decision, but Greg, how many roads do we maintain right now, miles?
We have 74 miles of road.
And our budget is based on those 74 miles. I don't know, I mean, that would be, again, that's a board decision if it's presented to them, but in my time I've worked in municipal government, we've never taken back a road that's been dedicated privately.
Okay, alright.
Did you say that the community was, that the road was to...
Hampton Green, right on 202 and Nap Road.
In Buckingham.
At the crossing.
No, I mean, you mentioned another area where they did...
Arbor Point in Buckingham Township, Bucks County.
What's it called, Harbor?
Arbor Point. Why are you looking to have the roads turned over? Is the HOA not doing a good job?
You know, starting from, sometimes the, you know, because I'm part of HOA, we know the problem of, you know, if there's a heavy snowstorm or slick and all, anything like that. It's a constant headache to just, you know, get people and... It's just basically an extra work on us.
Have you thought about a different management company? Because we do have a lot of homeowners associations within the Township, and they do take care of the roads. Maybe it's time for a different management company that can handle your neighborhood.
Okay. Alright, so basically, they are going to just call the, like, change the management company and someone who can help us better, and...
Yes, that's what I've seen happen in the past, where if you can get a new management company who may have better contacts or, you know, just different ways of doing things, it can be turned around pretty quickly.
Okay.
Do you have an existing, you don't have to say their name, but you have a management company?
We do, yes, but then, you know, there are a lot of changes in that company, so, you know, any new person on the Board, it takes time for them to understand the system, so we end up doing the job a lot of times, so.
Do you have, you have your own company, then? It's not out, it's not like a Camco or Mid-Atlantic?
It's kind of outsourced with another company, yes, maintained. So that, and the other question is, a few people raised this issue. In case, again, just in case, if the Township decides to take the roads on them, and we do not manage it anymore, is there an option that the Township can build roads within, through, like, just a bypass road between Nap to 202 and all that? I mean, I saw the plan, there's no way a plan, a road can be built within the community that way.
I would think not. The real plan is done, correct?
Yes, I mean, that was so...
I don't think you're gonna get any new roads.
Yeah, makes sense, okay. So this was all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let me keep my head up. Anyone else? Okay, item number five is the consent agenda. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following minutes of the May 27, 2025 Board of Supervisor Meeting. Gratification of the payment of bills for June 9, 2025, payment of bills for June 23, 2025, and escrow release number one for 1819 North Line Street.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor? Okay, now for the big stuff we've been waiting for. Police promotion, I turn it over to Chief Peoples.
Thank you, Officer Woke. On November 25, 2024, Sergeant Glenn Davis was promoted to Lieutenant, creating an open sergeant position in the Patrol Division. In January 2025, a multiple-phase promotional process was initiated. This process included both a written examination and oral review board. After this highly competitive process, Officer Timothy Woke was ranked the top candidate is recommended for promotion to the rank of Sergeant. Officer Woke was a police officer with the Vermont State Police for two and a half years before being sworn in as a police officer with the Montgomery Township Police Department in July 2011. Officer Woke has served in several positions within Montgomery Township to include the Highway Safety Unit, K-9 Unit, Officer in Charge, Field Training Officer, a member of the Drug Task Force, and a member of the Awards Committee. During his career, Officer Woke has received numerous letters of gratitude, awards, and accolades, not only from Montgomery Township, but also surrounding jurisdictions for his dedicated police service. Throughout his career with the department, Officer Woke has shown exemplary dedication and professionalism in executing his duties. With great pleasure, I present Officer Timothy Woke to the Board of Supervisors for consideration for promotion to the rank of Sergeant. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve the promotion of Officer Timothy Woke to the rank of Sergeant for the Montgomery Township Police Department effective June 24, 2025.
Excellent. I'm gonna go ahead, make a motion to promote Officer Timothy Woke to the rank of Sergeant for the Montgomery Township Police Department effective June 24, 2025. All those, any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Moving right along, Chief Peoples for the recognition of the 2025 Citizen Police Academy graduates.
Thank you. I'd ask the 2025 Citizen Police Academy class, please come forward. This evening, the Police Department would like to recognize several members of our community for completing the Department's 2025 Citizen Police Academy. The first Montgomery Township Citizen Police Academy was held in 2005. There's been an academy annually ever since, with the exception of 2019, when it was canceled due to COVID. If you're 19 academy classes, I'm proud to say that the program is still growing and improving every year. Classes consisted of several topics, so include station tour and functionality, criminal investigations, highway safety and accident investigation, K-9 Unit, defensive tactics, traffic stops, use of force simulator in situations, and special weapons and tactics. The success of the Citizen Police Academy is only possible due to the dedication of the Police Department's officers and staff. This year, the CPA was coordinated and led by Community Police Officer Jason English. Assisting officers include Lieutenant Jerry Dougherty, Lieutenant Glenn Davis, Detective Sergeant Andrew Benner, Detective Todd Walter, Detective Jeff DiPaolo, Highway Safety Officers Michael Jenkins and Officer Byrne, K-9 Officers Timothy Woke, Officer Andrew Haber and Officer Nicholas Lefrazio, and SWAT Officer Matthew Seidel. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors recognize the members of our community who completed the Department's 2025 Citizen Police Academy.
Wonderful. I am gonna make a motion to recognize the members of our community who participated and completed the Police Department's 2025 Citizen Police Academy. Any public comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Can we all fit in?
We have awards, we have awards, nice. Thank you so much. It's great seeing you.
Okay, Chief Peoples, recognize the police officer commendations.
Thank you. This evening, the Police Department would like to recognize several members of the Department for their exceptional performance in line of duty, as recommended by the Police Department's Award Committee. This committee, appointed by the Chief of Police, considers those cases of outstanding police performance as nominated by the officer supervisor. First one I have is a letter of official commendation. If you're present, please come forward. Sergeant Joseph Shot, Officer Timothy Woke, Sergeant Timothy Woke, Officer Jacob Beebe, Officer Craig Stoli, Officer Michael Rairden, and Detective Sergeant Benner. On Tuesday, November 26, 2024, Squad Three officers received information of a suspect identified in a string of theft-rum vehicles during the month of November. Officers believed the suspect was staying at a local hotel and responded to the hotel to investigate. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the suspect was still in the hotel room. Squad Three officers created a plan to track the suspect's movement in an attempt to catch him in the commission of a crime. Due to the coordinated efforts of members of Squad Three and the assistance of neighboring agencies, the suspect was taken into custody during the commission of the crime. As a result, the Montgomery Township Detective Division obtained a search warrant for the suspect's hotel room. The search resulted in recovery of numerous personal items reported stolen by Township residents, along with illegal drugs. Your teamwork and dedication to the public safety enabled the arrest of an actor that was responsible for thefts in over seven cases reported to the Montgomery Township Police Department. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors recommend the, I'm sorry, recognize the outstanding performance of these law enforcement personnel for their actions in the line of duty while serving and protecting the community of Montgomery Township. Do each one, or do they move on? The next again is a letter of official commendation. This is for Detective Sergeant Andrew Benner, Detective Ricardo De Jesus, and Detective Todd Walter. Detective Todd Walter will be the recipient today. On Sunday, December 8, 2024, at 02:00 hours, the Montgomery Township Police Department responded to a disturbance involving a shooting at the Boca Del Mar Restaurant located at 411 Doylestown Pike. Upon arrival, it was discovered that several patrons got into a verbal altercation earlier in the night. At the end of the night, one of the patrons retrieved a gun from his friend's vehicle and approached one of the patrons he had earlier had an argument with. The suspect initially pointed the gun at the victim, then pointed the gun at the ground, firing five to six shots. The suspect again pointed the gun at the victim, then pointed the ground, firing several more shots. At some point during the altercation, the suspect headbutted the victim, causing facial injuries that required medical treatment. The suspect then fled the scene. Detective De Jesus initially responded to the scene, conducting interviews and collecting evidence. During Detective De Jesus's initial investigation, he was able to develop the suspect. Over the following days, Detective Sergeant Benner, Detective Walter, and Detective Jesus conducted an extensive investigation, obtained search warrants, and were able to identify the suspect and locate where he was residing. On January 8, 2025, a coordinated effort between Montgomery Township Police Department, the Buckingham Township Police Department, the Upper Buck SWAT team resulted in a successful and peaceful apprehension of the suspect, as well as recovery of the Glock handgun used during the incident. This investigation was conducted thoroughly, professionally, and tactically by all involved. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors recognize the outstanding performance of these law enforcement personnel for their actions in the line of duty while serving and protecting the community of Montgomery Township. Next word is an official commendation for merit. Officer Sean Orson, please come forward. On Saturday, January 18, 2025, at 16:01 hours, Officer Sean Orson located a black Chevy Trax with a suspended registration traveling northbound at Bethlehem Pike. Officer Orson stopped the Chevy, and upon approach, he detected an odor of marijuana coming from the vehicle. During Officer Orson's interaction with the occupants, he noticed they displayed nervous and deceitful behavior. The occupants were uncooperative and refused a consent search. Officer Orson's training expertise led him to believe that further criminal activity was afoot, and therefore impounded the vehicle, and applied for a search warrant. The search warrant was approved. The resulting search produced a fully loaded Glock handgun, 93 grams of marijuana, 68 individually packed baggies of cocaine, 10 ecstasy pills, and drug paraphernalia. It was also discovered that the passenger in the vehicle was a person who was not allowed to possess a firearm due to their previous criminal record. Once an arrest warrant was filed, the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office contacted Officer Orson as his suspect had an open investigation with their office. Due to the information obtained from Officer Orson's investigation, the Attorney General's Office and the United States Marshal were able to locate and arrest a suspect in his Philadelphia home. They were further able to obtain a search warrant for the suspect's residence that resulted in the seizure of narcotics, as well as an assault rifle, another Glock handgun, and a ghost gun that had a switch installed to turn it into a fully automatic weapon. Further investigation led to one of the accomplices' arrests, where two stolen firearms were recovered. Due to Officer Orson's proactive and thorough investigation, two felons, several illegal handguns, and a large quantity of narcotics were taken off the street. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors recognize the outstanding performance of this law enforcement person for his actions in the line of duty while serving and protecting the community of Montgomery Township.
And I will make a motion to recognize and commend the identified law enforcement personnel, Officer Orson, for their outstanding performance in the line of duty. Any public comment? All those in favor? Okay, we're moving on to, well, first let me just say congratulations again to everyone that was recognized this evening. Thank you for all that you do. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number nine.
Is that Lloyd, did she respond to the second room? Is that Lloyd, the second room? Or there might be residents behind the vet. That's possible there.
Carrie's gonna let everybody leave out and we'll move on.
That must be Lloyd.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number nine. This is a public hearing, proposed amendment to zoning ordinance number twenty-five dash three four eight, electrical vehicle and charging stations. Mary Ann McCall.
So staff has requested the adoption of the proposed amendments to the Montgomery Township Zoning Code, Chapter two thirty, as well as amending Article twenty-one to provide a new section for guidance on installing electric vehicle charging stations throughout the township as recommended by the fire chief and zoning officer. The proposed ordinance amendment has been submitted and reviewed by the Montgomery County Planning Commission and Montgomery Township Planning Commission. The review letter and draft minutes are included in your packet. The board authorized the advertisement of this amendment during the meeting on April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and it was advertised on June ninth, twenty-twenty-five, and June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. I'm not sure, John, if you need to enter anything onto the record.
Yes, as this is a zoning ordinance amendment, we should adjourn into a formal hearing on this ordinance. I will do so at this time, and I have five exhibits for the purposes of that hearing. First is Board Exhibit One, which is the ordinance itself. Board Exhibit Two is the proof of legal notice of tonight's hearing in the Reporter Newspaper on June ninth and June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Board Exhibit Three is proof of submission of the ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library on June fifth. Board Exhibit Four is proof of the May eighth, two thousand twenty-five Montgomery County Planning Commission's submission and then subsequent review. Board Exhibit Five is the proof of prior submission and then review on May fifteenth of Montgomery Township Planning Commission. This ordinance has been summarized and makes new additions related to electric vehicle charging stations, energy storage systems, and the storage of electrical vehicle batteries and amends certain definitions. At this time, does there, is there anybody in the public that has comment on this ordinance? Hearing and seeing none, I'll turn over to the board to see if the board had any questions or comments on the ordinance. Hearing and seeing none, Chief, did you have any comments you'd like to make as integral of part of this ordinance? Okay, with no comments, this ordinance is now in a position to be voted upon by this board and will adjourn the public hearing and back into the public meeting for such a vote.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-five dash three four eight to amend Chapter two thirty, Article twenty-one of the Code of Montgomery Township as presented. Any public comment? All those in favor? Moving on now to item number ten, which is also a public hearing conditional use application. Nicole Salas, Connect Veterinary Surgical Services, one thousand eight Upper State Road. Mary Ann McCall.
Nicole Salas has submitted a conditional use application to construct a surgical services animal hospital at one thousand eight Upper State Road, the Dunleavy property. The proposal is for a ten thousand square foot, single-story facility on the property consisting of one point six seven acres and is permitted by conditional use in the BP Office and Professional District. The applicant is requesting conditional use approval for the proposed use in accordance with Article fourteen, two thirty, and Article twenty-one, two thirty dash one fifty-six two of the Township Zoning Ordinance. Township staff and consultants, as well as the County Planning Commission, have had the opportunity to review the details of the application. Corresponding review letters and comments are in your packet. Was presented to the Township Planning Commission at their May fifteenth public meeting, and the draft minutes are also included in your packet. Public hearing was advertised, property posted, and notification letters were mailed to the adjacent property owners. At this public hearing, the Township Solicitor will guide you through the hearing process and handle details on behalf of the township.
At this time, we'll adjourn into the public hearing on this conditional use application as summarized by the Director of Planning and Zoning. The applicant is represented tonight by Kristen Pianzio from Hamburg, Reuben Mall, and Maxwell. I have five board exhibits. First, Board Exhibit One, which is the conditional use application with the accompanying exhibits that were submitted on the app, the applicant. Board Exhibit Two is the proof of publication of tonight's hearing on this conditional use application, which was set forth in the Reporter on June ninth and June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Board Exhibit Three is the proof of posting of the subject property to provide notice to the surrounding property owners. Board Exhibit Four is the proof of notice to the adjoining property owners and mailers to the surrounding properties, which was submitted on June fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Board Exhibit Five is the proof of submission and reviews by the Montgomery County and Montgomery Township Planning Commissions of the application. Before we turn this over to Ms. Pianzio, is there anybody here seeking party status to be involved in this application? Then let me just explain what party status means. Party sta, anybody here will have the ability to make comment to this application for the board's consideration. But party status means you will actually be a party to this application, and you will have the opportunity to present your own witnesses, ask your own questions to, to the witnesses presented by the applicant, for essentially becoming part of the hearing. So again, you don't have to have party status in order to make comment on the application. Everyone has an opportunity. Party status then makes you part of the hearing to present additional evidence and also provides you with a potential right to appeal. If you are seeking party status, you have to show that you are a property owner that's impacted by this application. So that being said, is there somebody here that's seeking, or anybody here seeking party status to the application? I see three people that are raising their hands in the rear. Can you please come to the microphone so we can put you on the record to see who you are and your relationship to the application? Okay, is this one party or is this two party that we're? All right, ma'am, you're first. Your name?
Lorraine Schell.
And could you spell that for the court reporter?
S C H E L L.
Okay, and Michelle, where do you reside?
One nineteen Matthew Drive.
Okay, and where is that, how far is that from the subject property, the ten oh eight Upper State Road?
It's attached to the back.
Okay, so you're adjacent to the property. Under the circumstances, the location, I believe she does meet the standard to become a part of this application. And you did receive a notice of the hearing today? Okay, so you'll be granted party status and you'll be able to participate in the hearing. Okay? Could you please provide your name again for the applicant?
Lorraine Schell, S C H E L L.
Thank you. Moving on. The next?
Hi there, Kim Logan, L O G I N, also adjacent to the property, one twenty-one Matthew Drive.
And you received a notice to attend to say. Based upon the proximity and receiving the notice, I do believe that Ms. Logan is appropriate for a party status, and you'll be granted party status for this application. Moving forward.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm just here to translate for him. He's immediately next to the property. His name is Jose Lage, is at nine seventy seven.
Okay, so are, what is your relationship to him?
We're just friends.
Okay, and he doesn't, he doesn't speak English, is what you're saying?
He understands a lot of it, he just has a difficult communicating with you guys.
Okay, and?
Jose?
Lage.
L A G E. J O S E. Last name is L A G E.
And where does he reside?
Seventy-seven Ocean Road, he's immediately attached to the property line.
Okay, so that all three, all three people seeking party?
Nine seventy-seven Horsham Road.
Okay, with that, located just at the property and receiving notice to be here today, you will also be granted party status and be able to participate. If you'd like to sit in the front, you're welcome to in order to see the, the proceedings in more detail, but you certainly don't have to. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Pianzio to move forward and present the application.
Thank you. Good evening, nice to see you all. Sitting next to me is Nicole Salas. She's the equitable owner of the subject property at the corner of Upper State and Horsham Roads. This property has been the subject of many attempts for revitalization. It actually consists of two parcels, which we will merge together. As you know, a conditional use is a use that is permitted. There was a recent ordinance adopted by the supervisors to permit an animal hospital on the property. This conditional use process will show that we meet all the criteria in the zoning ordinance. After this hearing, we would move forward with a full land development application. As the board knows, that is a very lengthy process, at which time we would deal with things that I'm sure the neighbors are concerned about, such as landscaping, ingress egress, lighting, the layout of the property, stormwater management, and things like that. All of that will be done later. It is not the subject of this hearing. We do, however, have a head start on some of that because in order to meet the zoning, we've had to get our ducks in a row, make sure that we could fit everything on this property. This property is oddly shaped, and in order to put rectangles and squares on an oddly-shaped property, it took some finagling. Nicole's husband is in the second row. This is their love project that they could build their future here in Horsham Township. Plans to operate this vet hospital. She is a vet herself. I'm sorry, what did I say? Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I've been doing too, it's Horsham Road, I'm doing too much work in Horsham. The Montgomery Township, thank you. She wants to make roots here and finally find a place that she can call home. She's hired an architect, he's sitting here in the front row. We have bowler engineering on board as well. We have been working for months trying to put this together. In order to make the building work, we've had to make adjustments to the parking lot because the parking has to fit perfectly, and so does the building. We've had to make adjustments to the building because some things we thought didn't count as square footage do count as square footage, and they were important to Nicole, so we've nipped and tucked because the parking had to meet the square footage of the building. So we've met with staff, we started with a fire marshal because we knew his truck had to make the circulation in the parking lot, and we're here now knowing that we meet all the zoning requirements. We'll show you that in order for this conditional use approval, and then we would move forward with the real nuts and bolts, the engineering of how this earth would be moved and how this building would come out of the ground, which I think the neighbors are interested in. So with that preliminary introduction, I'll ask that Nicole be sworn in and we'll get started.
Nicole Salas, S A L A S, N I C O L E. Sorry. Yes.
Yeah, she's a soft talker, so yeah.
Stop yelling at my children.
Thank you. All right, so I sit here as the equitable owner of the property. That's true. Okay, can you tell the board, list your educational background, and then we'll talk about your experience?
Sure. I'm a board certified veterinary surgeon. What that means is I've been through four years of undergrad, four years of vet school, a year of an internship, a year of surgical internship, and three years of a surgical residency. So thirteen years of schooling. I have been practicing, I was at Concha Hocken for about, well, out of my residency, I was in Tampa for about eight years, moved to Concha Hocken, practiced for seven years, and then decided, why am I working for someone else when I could be working for myself? So I've left my job, and I currently am in Lancaster and Allentown while we're working on this project. So I'm really excited to get it started, so I could be having less of a mute. And I am originally from New Jersey, but I did my residency in Salem. Well, I lived in Salem, it was in Langford. I'm familiar with the area, and we currently live in Blue El. So this was a perfect location, getting close to home, close to my girls, I have twin ten year olds, butters.
And this would be the first surgical center in Montgomery County, right?
It would, it would be the first surgical center in Montgomery County. And the reason I wanted to do a surgical center versus a big specialty, multi-specialty, twenty-four hour hospital is because I wanted something that was a little more specialized. So for example, in human medicine, you go to a human surgical center, and it's a lot different than going to a big hospital, right? You feel like your care is a little bit more directed towards you, which is what I'm hoping to do with this practice, where people come in, they're not going to come in for surgery, they're not going to be coming in through an ER or through something crazy, that they're going to feel like they're just rushed in and rushed out. And you'll see as we present the building, it's going to look more like a home, allow people to feel like this is part of their home, that they're coming to see someone that they know and they trust, and they're calling, leaving their pet with me for surgery. Making the decision to do surgery is a big decision for a lot of people, especially for their pets who can't speak. So that's where I come in, and I want it to be comfortable and a calm environment for them. So as we go through the pictures, you'll see it kind of looks not like a sterile hospital that you'll typically see, it's going to look like a home.
Let's, let's talk about what this is not. It is not an urgent care, right?
It is not a twenty-four hour urgent care. There will not be cars coming in and out of the building twenty-four hours a day. It is going to be solely surgery and diagnostic imaging. So what that means is it'll be a Monday through Friday, eight to five or six. With that, there are going to be appointments, whether they're in the morning or the afternoon, it depends on what day of the week it is. They will be scheduled appointments, there will not be emergencies coming in and out of the building. In veterinary medicine, the technical staff typically work pretty long shifts. They work ten to twelve hours a day, so we're not going to have a lot of turnover in the parking lot with people coming in and out of work. So there will be clients that come in to pick up their pets after surgery. However, it's not going to be fifty cars coming in and out of the building. So it will be pretty calm. That's my hope and anticipation.
Okay, so there is occasional overnight stays after a surgery, right?
There will be pets that stay overnight, and that will be throughout the week and sometimes through the weekend, it just depends on the severity of the surgery. Those will be taken care of by a technical staff and a hospitalist. So it'll be a very minimal staff overnight, maybe three people and a friend's person. So there won't be a lot of in and out.
So you're not a kennel, you don't breed, and this is not ordinary vet care, right?
There will not be dogs outside of the building except to walk to go to the bathroom, which is maybe five minutes or less.
Okay. Talk about the staffing. What is, what is the staffing like for the facility?
So there will be roughly twenty people, depending total during the day, there may be about twelve people in the hospital. And I am giving rough numbers, it depends on how busy we are, how things go, but that's the expectation, approximately twelve people for the day staff and three to four for the overnight staff.
I'm going to read the definition of animal hospital. It says in parentheses, veterinary hospital, a place where animals or pets are given medical or surgical treatment, and the boarding of animals is limited to short-term care incidental to the hospital use. Facilities that breed and or board, i.e. kennels, are not permitted. Is it your opinion that you fit the definition?
Yes.
Okay. And what kind of animals are we talking about?
Elephants, strats, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, sorry. Cats and dogs. So this will be limited to cats and dogs. I do some exotic surgery, so there is a possibility that the zoo calls me and says, hey, you know, is it possible that we can CT a bobcat? That's not common, but if that happens, I will say yes, because how can you say no to a bobcat? But generally, I usually go to Elmwood and do surgery there when they ask me to. Um, but generally, I usually go to Elmwood and do surgery there when they ask me to.
Okay. Now, you said you've worked with an architect, Mike Silverman is sitting behind us, and when we found out that you're, you, you thought it was important to have this covered entryway. Um, and in order to have that covered entryway, we had to, and you had storage in the basement. We had to eliminate both of those because they counted towards the square footage, and square footage means you need parking, right?
Yes.
And we couldn't add any more parking than the maximum of forty that we're showing on the plan, right?
Correct.
Why was it important especially for the covered entrance to you?
Well, a lot of it was aesthetics. Um, I have an inspiration picture. Um, so that picture had a really beautiful peaked entryway. Also, when people are coming in, if it's raining, I want a covered entryway, um, but that was very important. So we did cut back some of the other areas. And again, I wanted this to feel like coming home, not coming into a rectangle or square sterile building that you see every other specialty surgical center everywhere in the world. So I wanted it to be different.
And you needed to have an MRI, but you eliminated that, right? Correct, because that took up a lot of space.
It did.
Okay.
It did. But that's okay. Yeah, I can live after MRI.
Okay. Um, there are all the questions I have for Nicole. I have Tom to go through the zoning criteria and the conditional use criteria.
Before we get the questions from the board, let's, uh, first see if those party status have any questions. First, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sheldon, see if she has any questions for, for this witness, which is really just limited to the operations and not the, the site itself. That would be to a future witness.
So first of all, we are all animal lovers, all the neighbors.
Can we have her name, please?
This is Lorraine Shell.
Thank you.
Lorraine Shell.
Thank you.
So I have numerous things on here, so just bear with me here. My one question is, all the buildings in the township, why would you pick that corner?
Well, there aren't a lot of buildings in the township, um, and I need ten thousand square feet. And there was not anything that, uh, met that criteria through a expansive search during the time that we searched. Um, this search was done, um, and we committed to this property in August. Um, and it is a great location. Uh, the, the location's not too far from my home. Um, and because of what we're doing, even though it abouts a residential area, I know that this is not going to be something that is going to be disruptive.
My next question is, will they be following the NFPA one fifty standard for fire protection for animal housing facilities?
I can't understand her.
Can you say that again?
Sorry, I had a question.
NFPA, will they be following the NFPA one fifty standard for fire protection for animal housing facilities?
Fire protection? So this building will be sprinkled, um, so if there is any fire, the building will be sprinkled. So, um, the fire hopefully will be put out before an animal is, is harmed. However, the, again, because this is a surgical center and not a large hospital, the amount of patients that we have in the hospital at a time, with the amount of staff that we have, I feel that we would be able to safely remove those pets before the sprinkler system went off.
And there's probably more to one fifty than just that. That's what I'm saying, if that's being followed.
I can't, I can't understand her.
She was asking if I was following, uh, uh, guidance, um.
Do you have any other questions?
Well, I was waiting for them to finish. So what is the lighting at the facility? That's going to be discussed at a later time.
Lighting?
Yes, it is, but we have.
We'll save that for the, um, for our representative from Bowler Engineering.
Okay. And the business hours are eight to six. At that time, will they have a gate that shuts so people aren't coming in there, hanging out?
No, there'll be no gate.
There, there won't be. There has to be a, an entryway, especially if there's a fire. Um, so there won't be a gate. Do you mean to the driveway?
Yeah, if, there's no pets spending the evening.
There are pets spending the evening.
It'll be every evening.
Yeah. Uh, no, it may not be, but there will be pets that do spend the night. It, unfortunately, surgery is not a predictable thing. Um, so how many pets go to surgery per day is very variable. Um, my job, as my husband knows, sorry, is, is, every day it can be different. Um, so it depends on who needs surgery, on what days, and, um, how many surgeries we can do in a day.
And so you're having twenty, approximately twenty employees, correct?
Total.
And there's how many parking spots? Forty?
There's forty.
Do you mean twenty, you're going to employ twenty people, but you said twelve at any given time?
Yeah, they won't all be there at the same time, because there's an overnight staff and then a day staff. And some people will work ten-hour shifts, some people will work twelve. Um, it's very similar to human nursing care.
Okay. The current unit sitting on the property more than likely has asbestos. So was that put in the plan?
Object.
For the demolition.
I couldn't hear the question.
I object. She's asking about asbestos in the building. It's not part of the direct testimony.
I, I sustain the objection. It's not related to this person's testimony. She wouldn't have that knowledge.
Right, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, you can ask your questions to the right person that's capable of answering those questions. So maybe that's something that if Bowler, if someone's done testing on it and has, uh, competency to answer that question, you can ask that question at a later time.
Okay, because we're concerned also about the signage. If it's neon, is there lighting over that's going to keep us up? The dumpster that's going to get dumped, does it have to be next to someone's property? Could it be towards the corner of Horsum and Upper State?
So again, the, the questions, I guess, is related to signage and dumpster location. Is that something that, um, that, that your clients, uh, able to answer? Is that something that's deferred to, to Bowler to answer?
Well, we can address it with the Bowler, um, with our project manager, although we haven't gotten to the full design because we haven't gotten to land development yet.
Understandable. Okay, so that would be a question that, that would be addressed to the engineer.
At another time.
Well, later on in this hearing, correct?
Alright.
Thank you.
So now we're going to have questions from, uh, Mr. Jose Lage.
Lage. So Jose is immediately next to the property.
Does he have any questions for this witness?
He does have a couple of questions. Um, so he said he doesn't have anything about. Yeah, he said he doesn't have anything about an animal facility being in Montgomery Township. He's just a little concerned about being immediately next to his house. Um, he's worried about his house value.
Okay, alright, so this is a time for questions. So does he have a question? He can make a statement at the end, but right now it's purpose of I just, let me speak, this is for asking questions. So if you could ask questions and not make statements.
His, um, his question is about the lighting, because he's immediately next to his property, so there's going to be lighting on it twenty-four hour, I mean, at nighttime, right? And the glare coming into his property because he's literally next to it. He's worried about the generator. There is a generator on the plants, the noise. Um, he's worried about the trash and, uh, what could be in the trash. He's worried about the way that the fencing of the trash is going to look like, his house got broken in earlier last year. So, there is going to be fencing. If the fencing is going to be see-through, I mean, his family is there. Um, he's worried about the layout of the land and the runoff of the water and everything else, the previous and in previous areas. Um, and he's worried about the little bit of safety. Doesn't, I mean, he does have animals and he really enjoys animals. He, nothing personally against you, but, you know, I don't know if you would want to have an animal facility immediately next to your property. That's his concerns.
So I, my understanding is.
I'm sure you would, but as, you know, he has kids.
Okay, sir, I, I, I don't think that he probably said that everything to you word for word, and this is a translation. This isn't a summary.
Said a little more.
So, so what, what I'm gathering, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that you have questions similarly to Ms. Shell related to the lighting and the trash locations, and the fencing related to the trash locations. Any generator noise and location, stormwater and stormwater runoff or, or your concerns. Now, again, this wouldn't be the witness to answer those questions. We will have their engineer testify. But again, this is really just related to the use, and they may not have this figured out at this time, or it might be something that they might have plans. Um, but we'll, we'll, we'll hear about that from the, the engineer.
Okay, thank you.
At a later time. Are there any questions related to the operation or the business itself? Um, that the applicant could, could answer, Ms. Salas?
One, one thing that Mr. Carles had said, he is, I mean, safety, safety. Basically, now what can go wrong, you know, during business operations? Um, because his house is immediately next to his property, so that's, you know, that's his main concern there.
Ms. Salas, do you have any safety procedures related to maintaining the animals to make sure they don't get off the property or attack any other of the neighbor's animals, for example?
I'm going to ask it a different way, too. So the nature of the animals that are coming in, they, these animals need surgery. So talk about the, in what state are the animals that come, and is there any safety concern for an immediate neighbor?
Mm-hmm. Uh, I don't have any safety concern regarding the pets or patients that are going to be there. However, when we do take patients outside, that area will be a gated area or closed area. Um, we're still working on the plans, I will tell you, but for a pet to get out of my care would be awful, um, which means not just concerns about you, but for me taking care of a pet and it getting out of a hospital. So that's a big liability that we're not willing to sacrifice. So those pets, one, as, as Kristen's already alluded to, is that these pets are sick and they're having surgery. There are some that are having ACL surgery, and they're like, ah, whatever, I feel great. But they're not going to be pets that are going to really want to jump out of our care. Also, we use, um, slip leads instead of, uh, people bringing pets with their own collars. We use slip leads instead, so it's more secure to take them out. Um, and patients that are aggressive would be taken out sometimes with two people to make sure that my staff is safe. Um, however, safety is, is very, very, uh, for a pet or a patient to get out of a specialty practice and to harm a, another person, if they got out, they would be so scared that they wouldn't even go by you. Um, but they won't be getting out. That's the bottom line. This is, I don't expect there to be any.
One more thing you wanted to ask you was about the trash. What kind of trash you're going, I know, we're going to have recyclables.
Tom, I, Tom can address that.
Well, maybe a question related to what is, what is the waste that is generated from the facility?
So anything that is harmful goes into a biohazard container and is picked up by a biohazard company, and it is not stored outside. So syringes, needles, a, any medications, all of those go into a special container. That is not something that will be accessible from outside.
Yeah.
And a company comes and picks that up from indoors.
Yeah. One, like I said, the, the way the plans, the way he asked me, is that the trash can was going to be facing the front of his house. Because his house, basically, the front of his house faces the back of your prop, the back of the property. So his concern is if the trash can can be placed in a different place, or the dumpsters can be placed in a different place away, the most away possible from his house.
So the location of the trash, we can have Tom address?
We'll, we'll have the engineer address the location, the proposed location of the trash. Is that all? Okay, now we have Ms. Logan, see if she has any questions for the witness.
Thank you, and it's Kim Logan. Thanks. Um, and by the way, this is, I, I commend you for the job that you're doing, that you plan to do. I just have a quick question. I, I believe that you came from Blue Pearl. Um, do you have any plans in the future of expanding this to a twenty-four-hour emergency care service? And if so, would that then have to be run through zoning again? I don't, that's just a question I have in general.
Anything that's testified to tonight, she would have to adhere to. So if there's any changes, she would have to amend the conditional use.
Wonderful.
And make a, an additional application and come before the board again.
Okay. Then your answer was?
I do not plan on having a, uh, emergency practice.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Does the board have any questions for, for this witness?
Okay, now, hopefully, you can answer this, but maybe the engineer might be a better person. I'm just worried, I, I'm not worried, but, um, I, I had a question about fencing for the area where the dogs would be allowed to relieve themselves. Um, you said that it would be brief, but, um, will that area be fenced in?
That is the plan. Um, yes, thank you. I'm just looking at my, my, my.
That is a head nod back there by the architect.
But yes, everywhere that we take pets out, especially in a practice like this, we have to fence it. It, you know, you don't want to take any risk that they're going to get out. So yes, that will be a fenced-in area. It's not, it doesn't show it on the plan. Um, there is an area there, but, um, yes.
Okay, and what provisions will you make, uh, for the disposal of pet waste?
Mm-hmm. Um, so pet waste, we're going to have a turf, artificial turf. We haven't gone through this quite yet. So we have an artificial turf area, and the pet waste will be cleaned up, um, daily, multiple times a day, and disposed up in the garbage.
Okay, and will, will that garbage be covered and what provisions will you make for that?
Yes, the garbage will be covered. The smell will be as limited as possible, but poop smells like poop. I mean, I don't want to tell you, but we'll make sure that it doesn't smell that bad.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
I have a question about that artificial turf. Um, I've seen that. Um, I've seen it and I've smelled it walking past places. So what will you have in place to clean that on a regular basis or disinfect it? So these poor neighbors don't have to smell that urine smell.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, because it's not, there's not going to be so many pets in that area, I think that the smell will be limited. Uh, I'll be very honest, we talked about a couple of options, and we haven't settled on what we're definitely doing quite yet. Um, you know, we talked about grass. The problem is when pets eliminate on grass and the grass dies, and then they don't want to go to the bathroom, and it's unsightly and disgusting. Um, so we did talk about artificial, the artificial turf, um, areas have different layers. They have different special cleaners. Um, you use a hose, you use the cleaner, um, so I don't expect it to be smelly.
We should probably have that resolved by land development, so, and its location as well.
We have, we have a location. Um, it's just, um, we haven't settled on all of the details of that area. Obviously, this process is very long, so we were trying to get through this part, and then push through the rest of it. Um, because depending on how obviously today goes, uh, investing so much in the next steps without having an approval is a lot of money, to be very honest with you. And as Kristen has already said, we're funding this on our own, so, um, but yes, we will have everything by land development.
Okay, I, I think it will be important for those neighbors to know what the plan is, how often it will be disinfected,
Absolutely.
Especially on a day like today. It would be terrible.
Yep.
So we appreciate that.
Ms. Bianzio, do you think your client would be agreeable to a condition that she would reasonably maintain that outside fenced-in area to, to limit the odors and the remains, the, the waste that's remaining?
Yes.
You would agree with that, right?
Absolutely, because I, I don't want to smell that either. You know, I, I'm, I'm not going to have a facility that's going to have things that I wouldn't want in my own home.
Great, thank you.
I have a question about the number of appointments you would have, like certain, what procedures you would have each day. And, um, and then accordingly, how many overnights would you have as a limit? Would there be a limit to how many you could accommodate during the day, during the day, and then overnight stays?
Um, I don't know that I can answer that, um, because there's going to be limited cage space. I don't know. I don't know the answer, uh, because it, it really does depend on the day. Um, for example, today I did four surgeries. Um, tomorrow I work and I do eight appointments and fifteen rechecks between eight and twelve. Um, so I do see a fair amount of cases, but the time that they're there, those rechecks are there for fifteen minutes. So, um, it, it really depends on the need. It depends on, um, the type of cases. Uh, so I will give you examples of, right now, I, I cut anywhere between three to five to eight cases in a day. Some of those cases go home the same day. For example, last week I had a lot of surgeries, but I sent three or four cases home the same day because they were small procedures. Uh, so it is very variable. Um, I'll add another surgeon in at one point, um, to help me have a break. Um, so, you know, we could be doing, we'll cut on different times, but, uh, I'm just not sure how many to definitively say.
Okay, and then, uh, when you mentioned checks, rechecks, um, so I'm realizing there will be people that may have already gone home with their pet, and then they will come back to make sure the incision or everything is healing. Would there be additional, um, I know that there's some times I'm going here with things like lasers. Would that treatment be something where they'd have to come back for repeated visits? I'm just trying to get a sense of how, how many people will be in and out.
Yes, um, so yes, those people would be coming back for repeated visits. But those laser appointments, for example, they take a period of time to do, so it's not a quick. So that car will be sitting there for twenty minutes, and then they'll leave, and then the next one will come in.
Okay.
Um.
Okay, just getting, I'm getting, trying to get a sense of the, the flow of the day.
Generally, um, surgery is unlike internal medicine where I don't see those patients forever. I see them two weeks and eight weeks, or two weeks and six weeks. Um, so it depends on how many cases I have. I, I'm sorry, I feel like I can't give you a definitive answer, because I can give you a, a guesstimate. Um, but again, I'm sworn in here, so I don't know that, I don't want to say like, oh, I'm going to do five surgeries in a day. I'm not sure. It might be less than that, and it could be a little more.
Okay.
Yeah, it depends, you know, if a veterinarian. Yeah, it depends, you know, if a veterinarian has a case that broke its leg and I have availability to do that in the same day. Rather than like a human waiting a week to do surgery on a broken arm, um, I feel that that needs to go to surgery. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, I wish I could answer that a little better.
Are you the only surgeon that will be working or do you anticipate hiring another surgeon or two down the line?
I do anticipate hiring another surgeon or two. I I don't know, it depends on, uh, definitely one additional surgeon. It just depends on um the need, uh, the community need. If if we find that there's two surgeons and there's, we're good and we don't need to help anyone else with more surgeons, then we'll stick to two. Uh, but I may hire an additional surgeon if necessary, but that doesn't mean we're all working at the same time. So just to make that clear, that doesn't mean there's going to be a hundred surgeries a day because there's three of us. Um, it means that I'm going to get a day off. Um, and then I will have a radiologist, uh, so just so you know, there will be a radiologist on. Um, I have not secured the radiologist quite yet. Um, however, there will be a radiologist on. And the radiologist will be there to review x-rays, to do ultrasounds, to review CTs. Um, I think that's very important and it's a great teamwork.
Thank you.
No problem.
So the, am I correct that there would not be an animal allowed to stay there? Be overnight if there was not a surgery or an operation or some sort of medical treatment?
We will not be boarding pets.
So that's, that is the definition of boarding?
Yes.
If there is a surgery, they can spend the night, obviously, or some sort of treatment, correct? What is your understanding of what short term care means? How long generally would an animal be in your care?
The longest care that I've ever had of any surgery would probably be five days and that's very, very long for me.
On average, what's the, what's the stay?
Overnight.
Overnight.
Um, if it is an abdominal surgery that is a foreign body, for example, an animal ate something. They can typically spend two nights and in very rare cases, three nights. I do chest surgery where I take lung tumors out. Um, those patients can usually spend two to three nights. Um, and those are the cases that typically spend the longest amount of time in the hospital, uh, but most cases go home the next day.
In in a sad situation where someone didn't make it out of surgery, do you dispose of the animals onsite or is that something that has to be done offsite?
So if a patient gets put to sleep or if they pass away, um, they are going to be going into a freezer. Inside the hospital and a company comes and they take them away and they cremate them.
So there's no cremation onsite?
No.
And there's no disposing of the animals onsite? Any other questions from the board?
With regard to your, the overnight stay, um, and that just depends on if you have any animals. There may be nobody, no patients are there.
Correct.
And you're, you won't have staff that stays over overnight if there's not.
There will be a person answering the telephones.
Okay, so someone will always be there every, every night?
Maybe.
Okay.
Yes, um, so somebody will need to answer the phones for any patients that call and have a problem. The plan will be for them to be in the hospital.
Okay, and then um, just again, this is not, like, I can't call in an emergency, this is all strictly by appointment.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, now, if a veterinarian calls me the same day and says, hey, I saw this case today and it broke its leg, can you do surgery on it? There is a possibility that I would say, yes.
If you have an opening.
Send them over for an appointment. I see them as an appointment and then we do surgery that same day. But there will not be people driving in, running through the building, saying, hey, can I have surgery done without me being aware of it? Yep.
Call if you have something to say.
Yeah, I just had a question. You mentioned hours Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM. Did you have any weekend hours?
Weekend will only be for patient care, but not for surgery or for um appointments.
Saturday and Sunday?
Correct.
Okay. So no appointment Saturday or Sunday?
No. Working on quality of life for me too.
Okay, seeing no more questions, Ms. Pianzo, any other questions for your witness or you can call your next witness?
No, I'll call my next witness. Thank you. Thank you. Let's have you sworn in.
Thomas Knab. T H O M A S K N A B. Yes.
Okay, Tom, by whom are you employed?
Solar engineering.
And in what capacity?
I'm a project manager in the land development division.
And you also are a registered landscape architect, correct?
Correct.
And you had the job of meeting all the zoning criteria for this application, right? And um, I said that the property is curved and that created some challenges for you, right?
Correct.
Could you step over to the board? Um, on the board, uh, board members is the first page. With the application, there was a four-page plan set. This is the top sheet. And Tom, I want to just talk about the parking lot, right? We knew we needed forty spaces because the building has a ten thousand square foot um footprint. And in doing that, in order to meet that front yard setback, you had a pinch point of the parking area right by the entrance, right? So you just fit this parking lot in the way it's configured, correct? And when you designed this, you and I had a conversation of, could you go please meet with the fire chief? Because I hate to wait for the end at land development to find out that the plan doesn't work for the fire chief. So you did that, right?
Yes.
Is that why those parking spaces, that one area is labeled no parking? Because you did a truck turning radius according to the truck that he gave you and ran it through the site, correct? And it took out those, you had parking spaces there and he said, no, no, take them out because I need that turning radius, right? Okay. I'm not sure if he said it like that, right? No, no. All of that, no, no. And then, um, so we do meet the parking criteria. Okay, and can you turn to the, because I know the neighbors are concerned with um the landscaping. So part of the, and for the board, there is zoning chart at the top of this plan, the zoning table. And on, on that zoning table, you listed every section of the zoning code that applies to this BP district. And you listed all the amendments to the BP district according to uh ordinance twenty-five, three forty-six. On that chart, correct? And you show that we comply with each and every one of them, right? Okay, one of the requirements for the zoning, per zoning, is that there would be a buffer. Between our property and the adjacent residential properties because they're residential, right? And you show that on this plan, even though this is kind of a land, this is kind of a land development item. It's in the zoning code that that landscape buffer is required and you show that it fits, right? What's your answer?
Yes.
Okay, and at one point you had lighting standards on this plan that didn't meet the zoning code. Remember our conversation about lighting? And we said, we don't want any variances for lighting and we wanted to be mindful of the residential neighbors. Do you remember that conversation? And so that you lowered the light standards, right? So that we had no implications beyond the zoning requirements for the adjacent residential neighbors, right? Okay, and we comply with that lighting requirement.
Yes, we did.
Okay. And all of that will be part of your fully engineered plan set that you would submit for the land development application, right?
Are you saying that the, there is a additional buffering requirement as a result of the BP zoning district for this use? That's not uh on average to other sorts of commercial uses?
Yes, the BP district requires a landscape buffer when a use is adjacent to residential. And we have residential on both sides. The neighbors that are here tonight are our residential neighbors.
But that buffer is larger than other commercial districts?
That's correct, yes. It's written right in the zoning code. So it's appropriate that we show here at this stage and not wait for the land development process. So that's why it's shown on this plan. Where was I? The land development process, when you do those fully engineered plans, it's like a shed of, a a set of like twenty sheets. And it does stormwater management, it uh, it shows uh the trash where it's located, how it's enclosed. It shows circulation. Um, you have to meet with PennDOT for the driveway location, correct? Because that's a PennDOT street and ingress and egress would require a PennDOT permit, correct? You would have a review of um all the landscaping requirements in the subdivision and land development. How the curbing works, how the parking is developed and all, all those things during the land development process, right? And it's your intention that during that process that you would meet the criteria and go through the review process, correct? We would go and meet with the township planning commission, have a review by the county planning commission. You would get outside agency reviews, like an NPDES permit from the county conservation district. And any other applicable, applicable, applicable agencies that would review this plan set, correct? We would have to get uh water and sewer uh tied up for the property as well, right? Okay. Let's go through the requirements for a conditional use application that are found um in the zoning ordinance. First, that the um conditional use is permitted by conditional use. I think the zoning officer already stated that an animal hospital is permitted. You would agree with that too, correct?
Correct.
Okay, there was a question about signage. Um, we haven't sorted signage out yet. You, that's your understanding, right?
That's right.
And we either have to comply with the signing criteria or we have to go to the zoning hearing board to get signage relief, right?
Correct.
Okay. We are required to have vehicular access at a distance from intersections to prevent undue traffic hazards. You stated that PennDOT would review that driveway, but in your opinion, does that driveway uh prevent undue traffic hazards? Being it is located where you have it?
That's correct.
Okay, um, next, there is a requirement that capacity of that driveway not exceed uh the traffic. Um, estimated by the use that is proposed. Is that your testimony?
Yes.
That this animal hospital won't be out of character for the average animal hospital?
That's correct.
Okay, and there wouldn't be an unwarranted impact on traffic in the area as a result of this proposed use. Is that your testimony?
Yes.
And do you feel that the screening that is required is um adequate to buffer the adjacent uses by our neighbors?
Yes, I do.
Now, there's a requirement that the use does not adversely affect or contradict the Montgomery Township Comprehensive Plan. You reviewed the Gilmore Review Letter dated May eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
And that was prepared by Judith Goldstein, the senior project manager and landscape architect and planner with their office, right?
Yes.
And Judith stated that she talked about the mixed use across the street. And she said, the proposed development is generally inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. However, its proximity to a mixed use corridor and intensity of the proposed use is appropriate to the area. Would you agree with her?
Yes.
Do you believe that the proposed use meets the purpose of Article One of the chapter?
Yes.
Do you find that it's suitable for the character of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Is it your opinion that it would not bear adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property?
Yes.
It's one story, right?
Correct.
And a residential use is allowed to have two stories, right?
Correct.
Um, is it your opinion that it would not adversely affect public health, safety or welfare?
Correct.
Is it your testimony that they would not adversely affect or unduly burden water, sewer, school, park or other public facilities?
Correct.
Is it your testimony that it would not overcrowd land or create undue congestion or population?
Yes.
And in fact, your zoning chart shows that this is under the maximum impervious coverage permitted. Is that true?
That's correct.
We're allowed seventy-five percent and this proposed use is forty-nine percent. Is that right?
Correct.
And we're required to have twenty-five percent green area and your plan shows fifty-one percent green area.
Correct.
That's all I have for him.
Few fault questions, and if this isn't developed yet, I understand that land development is still coming. But there were some questions related to the trash facility, where it would be located. Has that been determined at this time?
Yes, the trash facility is located in the. So the trash facility is located in the lower left corner of the parking lot. And that's uh, location was determined generally from an access and vehicular movement of the trash truck. To be able to navigate our parking lot. As we testified earlier, we have a pinch point, we have two road frontages. So it's difficult to locate a uh trash, a a trash enclosure that would have it be uh adequately screened. But also accessed and uh securely uh positioned so that would create a safe condition for the client.
Now these, will that be a fenced in or enclosed trash, trash enclosure?
Right, it would be a fenced in trash enclosure.
And that would be on the other side of the buffering as well that that has to be installed?
Correct.
And fenced all the way around?
Yes.
According to the township standards, correct?
Right.
Um, there's a question about a generator or backup generators, or intention to have a generator on onsite?
There is, uh, the location is still yet to be determined uh through the land development process. And uh, the project architect can speak more specifics on the generator itself, which uh size and 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 sound that would be created. But that would be the intent at this.
Would you agree with me that a generator, if installed, would have to comply with the township standards? Uh, I think recently enacted related to generator placement and sound requirements?
Correct.
Um, there were some questions related to s- to water runoff or stormwater runoff. Will this development um increase stormwater runoff onto the adjoining properties?
No, so the way the the property is currently sloped and the way it would continue to slope would be towards. The intersection of Horsham Road and Upper State Road. What we're required to do, and again, we, there's still a lot of technical details that need to. Get sorted out under advisement of a geotechnical report that we have, testing that was done, infiltration rate, all of those types of things. But generally, what we're required to do is to capture stormwater generated from the runoff created from paved surfaces, buildings, that type of thing. And slow it down from leaving the site, some of which uh may infiltrate through the ground depending on the results of our geotechnical report. But no water would be directed at any of the residential properties that are immediately adjacent to the subject parcel.
And so there's some questions about signage and obviously you still have to figure out your signage plan, but I'm looking at it in elevation and I'm not seeing any signs on it. Do you know, is there a planning of having wall signs or or signs on the ceiling or was it going to be more directional floor signs?
We, we do want a wall sign of some sort, but someone mentioned neon. I'm sure that Nicole does not plan on a neon sign being on this building. It would be in keeping with the character of the building, something tasteful. And um, like I said, in keeping with the architectural style of the building.
Those are the questions I have. Before we turn over to the board, let's um turn it over to those seeking party status. And we'll talk, begin again with Michelle, see if she has any questions for uh this witness.
So this is probably for PennDOT about turning lanes on Upper State Road going, is it north, south or east, west, whichever way it's going? I don't know. The turning lane coming down to Horsham Road, is that going to be pulled back so people could pull into this facility? It's already a dangerous intersection.
So let's see, let's see if they know that at this time. Do you know from the, where you are with potential land developments, if there's going to be any improvements to that intersection?
We're still at a very preliminary stage with PennDOT and haven't received feedback from them. What we've done thus far is through our our traffic consultant submitting a scoping application. Where we determine the parameters for the traffic impact assessment that will be required for this property. So all those types of things, turning lanes, if they're warranted or not warranted, would be sorted out through that process. To get a PennDOT highway occupancy permit and would be uh transparent throughout the land development.
So Upper, Upper State Road is a PennDOT road, correct?
Yes.
And if PennDOT said you had to do that as part of your land development, you would have to do that?
We would have to do that.
Also come in the other direction, when you're coming from Costco down the hill and you accelerate to come up towards our neighborhood. People are going forty, fifty miles an hour ready. You're going to have someone coming down, turning left. There's a lot going on. I've lived in Montgomery Township forty-one years, thirty-five years in this property. So I'm watching what's going on and we had the same issues on Horsham Road several years ago.
So you're talking about a left-hand turning lane off of Horsham Road onto Upper State?
Is it going to be pulled back so that they could turn left into there?
No, again, that that's the state road as well, correct, a PennDOT road?
When you pull out, are you going to be able to make a left turn or only a right turn?
Right, so so Horsham Road is a, is a PennDOT roadway and we would need to analyze it as well as Upper State as a part of our traffic impact analysis. And again, still very early stages for any type of traffic improvements, turning lane adjustments that may or may not be warranted. Again, that's, that will all get uh developed through land development.
And if PennDOT says you have to put a left-hand turning lane in there, you you would have to put a left-hand turning lane in there, correct?
There's already a left-hand lane there.
Or or an extended lane?
An amendment or an adjustment, uh, correct.
And PennDOT would take into consideration the traffic coming and going from the site in order to make their determination?
Yes.
So when I come down from Costco and I'm at Horsham Road and go across, the two lanes become one. I'm going to make a right-hand turn into, um, Sunrise? Is it Sunrise? Into Sunrise. People are honking their horns and trying to push me off the road. And that's further up the road from the intersection, let alone right there. It's going to cause accidents. They're going to be looking for the address, looking to turn right.
Michelle, again, you're able to make your statements after, after the hearing. But right now, this is time for questions. If you have any questions for the witnesses.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Lage, any questions related to?
One of his questions is when the trash truck comes to pick up, you know, once they dump the dumpster on the ground, it always makes noise and, you know, it houses immediately. And assuming that they are not, they don't want to replace where the dumpster is going to be. You know, once that dumpster hits the floor, it's pretty noisy. And it's, that's what, that was one of his concerns.
The, the time of the pickup?
Well, the time, the pickup and every time they pick up and drop off whatever cans they do. Because, you know, they're pretty noisy once the truck, once the truck, you know,
Yes.
dumps them, that's
And that might be actually a question with Ms. Alice. Is it just a regular scheduled trash pickup? Or are there additional trash pickup times? And if you need to come back up to answer that question, feel free.
It, it won't be as frequent as you think you're thinking. So it will be regular scheduled pickup. Garbage typically comes weekly, uh, so it won't be many times a week.
It's not so much concern, not many times is the timing, but usually they come early in the morning when they do
And then Ms. Alice, would you agree that you're going to comply with the township codes related to noise ordinances, including trash pickup?
Yes.
You're not going to have somebody else, and that would include deliveries, for example? Whether it's deliveries or truck traffic or garbage trucks, you'll comply with the hour requirements under the township code?
And what are those hours? So we, do you know?
You're welcome.
And Ms. Logan?
I'm not sure if this question's for you, but, um, I guess I'm thinking about the excavation and like when, when the area is cleared out. What's the provision for the wildlife that are currently there? Because I know we have a buffer, you know, I know you're required to buffer, but is the, is the plan to take out was already there? And then replant or, because we have a buffer right now, we're good with it.
Right, so we engaged a professional arborist that's going to evaluate the existing trees on the site. Just for the sake of safety, because, uh, looking at an existing property that has mature trees or seemingly mature trees, they may in fact be very dangerous, uh, both to your property and, and the subject parcel. So we'll be happy to share the results of that evaluation through land development. But any tree that would be deemed, uh, required to be replaced would be replaced per the township's landscape ordinance.
Okay, I mean, there's definitely trees back there. It's just that there's also families.
Any other, any questions from the board for this witness?
Is there any thought in the hope of being a good neighbor that the dumpster could move over to Upper State so that it's not next to Mr. Lage's property?
We can, we can take a look at it, but that's the frontage side of the building. And that's the main entrance of the building. That's where the covered entrance is. So that might be tricky for us, but we can look.
You could put a nice fence around it.
Well, I, it's going to have a beautiful fence around it where it's located.
Just thinking about the noise.
I've made notes. We're going to be really super sensitive about that. And we might even try for a later pickup. I made a note about that too. 6:00 AM still sounds a little early, but if we can get a later pickup and maybe we could go a little heavy with the vegetation around it, we'll do what we can, but
It's just a noise. Like each time someone throws something in the dumpster, those lids close and slam and like
This isn't a, they're not a heavy trash generator. And it's not like, it's not like a restaurant where they have tins. It's, it's really bags. You're talking about gauze and a lot of paper and things like that.
Dumpster next to their house if they don't have to have it.
I understand.
If there's any way to move it.
We'll take a look at it.
All the neighbors might appreciate that.
I, I understand. We'll definitely, it's definitely got a big star next to it.
And I have one other question. So I have a drawing here that has, um, a red line around it, and the red line appears that it's going through his garages, the neighbor next door in Horsham. I mean, it can't be correct.
I, I'd have to see the exhibit.
I mean, so we, are you worried about infringement? Yeah, we, we, we have a drawing that here, that has a red line that can't be true.
Right, so this, this appears to be a tax map drawing from the County Planning Commission to generally show where the property line is. And it's inaccurate. A lot of times they are. It's just to show the precise or the approximate location of the property boundary. This property was surveyed by a professional land surveyor and that's the property line. So that, that, to me, that looks like an exhibit probably from an online mapping software.
Okay, just double checking.
And that would have been the exhibit to the Montgomery County Planning Commission letter, correct? So what we're referring to, it's, it looks to be from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. It's an attachment to the letter.
I have a question related to the note from the Planning Commission. It's on. Hi, so my question is related to the trees that were noted and the note from the planning, the County Planning Commission and the plan to, you know, ensure that you comply with our landscape ordinance. And also whether or not any consideration could be given to a, a rain garden to assist with your stormwater.
Right, so, uh, again, still very early stages. The intent is to have an underground stormwater management facility. Rain gardens are great in a lot of different contexts. Space is limited on this property and the amount of water that we would need to capture and manage wouldn't necessarily be effectively done through a rain garden. We could, uh, look at considerations of additional plantings. But the intent with this application is to, to propose an underground stormwater management facility.
But, you know, some of those plantings can also help our pollinators. Uh, and it just, uh, instead of grass would be something interesting to consider and potentially incorporate into your landscape design.
Right, yeah, that's certainly something we can look at. We're proposing a number of different, uh, foundation plantings. Again, still early stages, so this plan will develop, but it will generally reflect what we're showing here. You know, one of the other limitations relative to the rain garden aspect is getting the minimum required parking spaces that are shown here. So that is a limiting factor, um, needing to get to that 40 parking spaces. So, uh, that's, was the approach with the underground system, but we could certainly look at, uh, perennial plants, uh, flowers, trees, shrubs. I mean, that's all kind of wrapped into what we're looking to do here to make it feel like home of what the applicant, uh, testified to.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Just as a follow-up question, um, Mr. Knapp, I'm looking at the uses in the, uh, the BP district where this is located, correct?
Yes.
Are there other uses that are similar in intensity related to this use that, that you're aware of, permitted?
Related to an animal hospital?
I'm looking at, it seems that, um, for example, daycare facilities, daycare senior citizen facilities, uh, medical and dental clinics, um, personal service shops, tailors, beauty salons, shoe repairs, dressing shops. Those are all permitted in the BP district, correct?
Correct.
Now, in your experience, does that create more or less traffic and coming and goings than the use proposed?
Given the fact that we're proposing a facility that is just by appointment only, I would testify to the fact that those uses they just mentioned would be more impactful than our, our current use being proposed.
Thank you. Any other questions for this witness? Any follow-up questions?
No, none.
Ms. Pianzio, any other witnesses?
No, I don't.
I do have another ma- matter of housekeeping. I'm going to mark Board Exhibit Six, which is a, uh, letter granting a continuance to hold the hearing tonight, uh, from the applicant's attorney dated April 30th, 2025. Okay. With that, the applicant is, uh, resting their case. Uh, and at this point in time, it's turned over to the parties that have been obtained party status to see if you have any, uh, witnesses that you would like to present, um, on, on your behalf. Any, to call any witnesses, provide any exhibits. Of course, again, you always do get the opportunity to provide public comment at the end, but at this time, it's opportunity to present witnesses. So let me just go through for the record. Michelle, do you have any witnesses or testimony or evidence you'd like to present for the hearing? Uh, Ms. Logan? Mr. Lage? Okay. With that, we will then proceed to public comment. At this time, uh, those that have gotten party status and those that have not, that want to make public comment on this application have the opportunity to do so. But again, if you could just restate your names for the records or provide your name for the record before your, your comment. And, um, we could just do in orderly fashion. So this would be the time where, again, if you would like to make a comment, um, about this application for the board's consideration, you can do so at this time. Michelle, I know you started to make some comments if you wanted to reiterate anything at this point. If you, if you could, if you could come up.
With the asbestos, has that been brought up? It's an old house.
I guess it'd be a question, I guess we could address
What would they do?
Yeah, that was a question that was brought up. We failed to address. Mr. Knapp, are you aware of any results or studies related to the current house? For the demolition purposes or any DEP issues related to the property?
Not to my knowledge at this point.
That's the best we can do at this point in time.
If you were to find asbestos, you would have to properly disclose and disperse and get rid of it, correct?
Yes, yeah, I mean, with the demolition permitting process, the township would have our architect fill that paperwork out and we would have to follow all the requirements for any kind of asbestos removal if it was there, sure.
Okay.
Also, if the current owner could take care of the sidewalk area, if you're walking or riding your bicycle, you have to duck to get through. So that would be appreciated.
Thank you, and that would be something that, again, would come up through land development as well. Ms. Logan, do you have any additional comments? So Lage, do you have any comments? Is there anybody else here who wasn't a party that would like to make a comment on this application? Our hearing has seen none. Ms. Pianzio, do you have any final statements?
Um, no, I would like to move all the exhibits on to the record.
What, I'm not sure what the exhibits, if you've marked exhibits.
All that you've, that you've mentioned were the only, I didn't introduce anything new, just everything that we submitted with our application.
Correct, all the board, all the application exhibits, including the elevations and the plans, are included in Board Exhibit One.
Okay.
And Board Exhibits One through Six are moved in as evidence.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that the Township Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission recommended approval. We meet all the criteria in the zoning ordinance and, and the specific criteria and the general criteria. And we ask that you look favorably upon this application. All the concerns of the neighbors are valid. They're serious. We will take them seriously. We'll look at them when we go through the land development process. We just ask that we get moving to the next step, um, so that we can see you back here to discuss all that. Thank you very much.
If the use is granted, um, when do you anticipate moving forward with land development application?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, a, a few weeks, but within the next month.
With that, we will close this public hearing and this application is in position to be voted upon by this board. Uh, this board can vote on this application tonight. Or we were able to adjourn into executive session if you'd like to talk for quasi-judicial deliberation related to a decision for tonight as well. The board like to adjourn into executive session?
That's what I would like to do. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I would.
Okay, well, so we're going to adjourn into executive session for a quasi-judicial deliberation on this application.
Okay, after our little meeting, we're going to make a motion to permit the proposed veterinary surgical services hospital use on the property located at 1008 Upper State Road with conditions.
Those conditions would be, one, to work with the Township Planning and Planning Commission during the land development process related to the location screening and buffering of the dumpster in order to limit as much as possible the impact of that dumpster and use of the dumpster on any of the neighbors to ensure that the outside fenced-in area for the animals will be reasonably maintained and clean to limit odors and the waste that would be left upon that property. Three, to use reasonable efforts to the extent possible to arrange for deliveries and removal of the trash or the dumpsters after 8:00 a.m., again, to the extent possible, and use the diligent efforts to do so. Four, to comply with the exhibits and testimony today's hearing. And five, to comply with all laws, federal, state, township ordinances, and get all approvals and permits necessary, including obtaining land development approval prior to developing the building that was proposed today. So this would be the conditions that were proposed subject to the approval vote. Microphone.
The three folks that were speaking, did they get your email addresses? Okay, all right, because we want to make sure that you're included on anything on the go forward. Okay?
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 11, review of zoning hearing board applications. Maria McConnell.
Included in your packet is a summary of the applications before the zoning hearing board for their July 2nd, 2025 meeting. The board may remain neutral on the application and let the zoning hearing board render decision based on the testimony presented, or the board may send the solicitor's office to oppose an application. This action would require motion second and vote of the board.
Anybody have any concerns with the applications? Okay, we are fine to remain neutral. Item number 12, this is for Lloyd Industries, 231 Commerce Drive, LDS-23-008. Maria McConnell.
Mr. Lloyd has submitted a land development application to expand the existing 35,328 square foot fire damper warehouse and manufacturing facility at 231 Commerce Drive to add a 10,150 square foot addition on the southeast corner of the building. The addition is proposed to support current staff with no additional water connections needed or sewage flows anticipated. The plan includes stormwater management facilities and restriping of the existing parking lot, but does not include any paving or expansion of the lot. Township staff and consultants, as well as the County Planning Commission, have had the opportunity to review the details of the application and the corresponding review letters, comments, and waiver requests are in your packet. The application was presented and reviewed by the Township Planning Commission at their May 15th, 2025 public meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are also included in your packet. If the board chooses to grant this land development plan approval, they will need to do so by adopting a resolution which has been drafted by the Township Solicitor's Office. The requested waivers are for consideration by the board.
And the applicant tonight is represented by Greg Adelman from Captain Stewart, who's filling in for Amy Farrell. The resolution is included in the board packet. It's essentially, most, all the conditions are standard conditions for our land development applications. There is an additional condition to address some of the township's concerns related to stormwater runoff at Commerce and Demora that they will be looking to see if they can regrade that property in order to address the stormwater runoff. And if it's determined that regrading will not sufficiently address the conditions and that a larger improvement is necessary, they're going to cooperate with the township and any adjoining landowners if they can, and if any, to design and install an improvement project and pay their proportionate share of the work they're on. So that was an additional condition that they were agreeable to. And again, there are 11 waivers. I don't believe that there were any comments on any of the waivers at the planning commission meetings. At this time, I believe Mr. Adelman and the applicant, the applicant's engineers here answering questions related to the land development, which again is a addition of approximately 10,150 square feet on the southeast corner of the building.
This is the one time where the lawyer tries not to say any. It's hard.
So are we walking through those waivers? How are we handling?
I'm happy to go through the waivers if you'd like. I can just list them and if you want to stop me, if you want to discuss them more. One is to not provide a sidewalk along Commerce Drive frontage. Two is to not provide the curbing for those sidewalks along Commerce Drive. Three is to allow wheel stops in lieu of ballards spaced five feet apart. Four is to allow a basin slope of three to one. Five is to not require a sloped basin bottom. Six, to allow stormwater management facilities designed to be based on proposed impervious area only. But if additional areas are proposed in the future, additional stormwater facilities will be required. Seven, to not require traffic study in lieu of, they have submitted a traffic generation letter that was submitted to the township already. Eight, to not require fronts around the stormwater management facility to allow access to the basin as the water is 2.53, two foot, five, three inches feet deep and surrounded by other industrial properties. Nine is to not require landscape plans prepared by registered landscape architects. Ten is to not require separate preliminary final plan development submissions. And 11 is to not require existing features with on the plan, 400 feet, but to provide the aerial photos as done, which is a standard waiver. So those are the 11 waivers that have been requested.
So the sidewalks along the frontage on Commerce Drive is something that I would like to do personally. I would not be inclined to offer a waiver for.
Keep in mind, the Commerce Drive frontage is only 45 feet. It's just that part of the cul-de-sac. And there's no sidewalk on those adjoining properties.
And having a pedestrian refuge on any stretch of the road, I think, is a positive and an improvement and enhancement that I would like to see.
Any other discussion or comments on any of the waivers? Amanda Chair, would you like to take the waivers one at a time or would you like to?
I think that has a question.
I just wanted to reiterate that I think that we should have sidewalks along there as well. I know it seems like, oh, why would we have it in one place and not others, but we have to start somewhere.
Again, it's 45 feet. The driveway is 25 feet, but so you're going to have two little sections of sidewalk. The other alternative is, obviously, the property owner would agree to install sidewalk if the adjoining properties did at any time. But I think those two little sections are going to be kind of misplaced out there based on current improvements.
I mean, the township does have the right at any time under the township code to require property owners to install sidewalks along Commerce Drive. You don't have to do it in this context. If you saw fit in the future that Commerce Drive should have sidewalks, it would make the most sense to have all the sidewalks installed at a contemporaneous time rather than, as Mr. Kiefer was saying, have two little islands of sidewalks in an industrial complex where people aren't going to be walking. So you have that ability.
Do you have employees who walk to work from that to your location?
Not that much. No.
You don't have any employees who arrive on foot?
No.
And there's no customers who access that facility via foot?
No.
And so, I mean, if.
Okay, it is a different scenario.
We do want our sidewalk, but in this case, it may be more of a tripping hazard if it's just two little pieces. I'm with you on the sidewalk.
It is a pedestrian refuge, though, for anybody else who's walking along and, you know, giving pedestrians refuge from the traffic along that thoroughfare is, I think, advantageous. And doing it when you're in construction makes sense and provides some efficiency as well in terms of your cost.
And it is at the end of the cul-de-sac, so there's really not true traffic in that area.
You're in the middle of an industrial park. And obviously, I understand you've got to start somewhere. Typically, when I've had those, this is a sidewalk-to-nowhere arguments with municipalities, I say if you're going to have sidewalks, have sidewalks. Put it everywhere. Don't just put it in one little spot so then you have it. I think that's always been the goal when I hear township say, we've got to start somewhere.
Well, we have been. We've been putting them throughout the entire township and inquiring everyone who's come before us to put sidewalks in. So this is not a unique request.
We would agree to put a note on the plan that's a deferral at such time as, you know, you get more sidewalks on Commerce. That way, you don't have to come back and ask. There could be a provision on the plan or in the approval, Mr. Walco could add it, that when you want to put them in, you put them in. I just don't understand the, you know, in this location, in this district, for this use.
I don't really think.
Two little sections of sidewalk.
It would be so helpful to see it on.
Yeah.
It's not in context, so it's hard to see where it is.
How does that, how does everybody feel about that if we have it as a condition?
I'm okay if it's a condition for later that they would agree to it. If it's a condition, it makes sense. You're saying 45 feet and 25 of it is a driveway.
Yeah.
You have stepping stones on the other side.
Right, and you'd have two small sections of curb.
Well, if that's something the board would like to do, we could make a motion at this time to amend the waiver, number one, to a deferral that would say that it would defer the sidewalk along Commerce Drive to a time when the adjoining properties are required to also put in sidewalks. That also brings up the question of, number two, which is the concrete curbing that usually goes along with the sidewalks, whether or not that would also be deferred at that time.
I would defer both.
So I'm not an engineer. My only concern about the curbing, and I would want our engineer to talk about this, we do have a ponding issue with water out there, and I'm afraid that just a piece of a curb might serve as a funnel, if you will, and make the situation worse. So I think a deferral would make sense so that we make sure that the stormwater issue that we're currently experiencing out there is addressed first and that we don't exacerbate a situation.
Comment on that over there.
I agree. So I would move on John's coverage or the motion.
So I would move on John's coverage or the motion to defer one and two. Second.
All those in favor? I should have asked if there was any public comment first. Now, all those in favor?
Hi. Did we just vote on one and two, though?
We just, we just, well, no, we didn't vote on it. We voted amended. To provide for, again, a deferral from those two sections to a time. When the joint properties would install sidewalks and presumably install curbing along with those sidewalks. Now, the resolution before this board has deferrals as stated before one and two. And the remainder would be waivers from three through eleven.
Right.
Does the board have any other questions or considerations or discussions related to waivers that would warrant us going through them one at a time?
I did not. Does anyone ask?
No.
With that, so with that, the this resolution. Could be voted upon as a block granting all of the waivers and the deferrals as amended. Or it could be taken individually. I'll defer to you, Madam Chair, as to how you would like to to address.
We'll do motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twelve approving the land development application of Lloyd Industries. With requested waivers with conditions. With deferred conditions submitted by William P. Lloyd.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's your patience.
Our pleasure. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Night.
Okay, item number thirteen authorization to bid the three oh nine corridor traffic signal preemption upgrades. Greg Reith.
All right. Good evening. Included in the twenty twenty-five budgeter upgrades the traffic signal preemption systems. Which would convert them from the current less reliable audible system to the more reliable optical system for the safety of emergency responders. And the motoring public when responding to emergency calls. This is a multi-phase year project and will continue with the upgrades to several intersections along the Route three oh nine Bethlehem Pike Corridor. As well as Nap Road and two oh two Parkway. Competitive bids will be solicited utilizing Penn Bid website. A total of a hundred thousand dollars was included in the twenty twenty-five capital investment plan for the upgrades of the traffic signal preemption system. So our recommendation at this time would be for the board of supervisors to approve the authorization for the advertisement of the bid.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the bid for the upgrades to the traffic signal preemption systems utilizing Penn Bid.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, item number fourteen is considered bid authorization for the traffic signal modernization at Route three oh nine in the English Village Shopping Center. Greg Reith.
All right, thank you. Included in the twenty twenty-five capital investment plan is the traffic signal modernization. At the intersection of Route three oh nine and English Village. Gilmore and Associates, the township engineer, prepared the signal specifications to meet the township requirements. And contractors' bids will be solicited utilizing the Penn Bid website. A total of six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars has been included in the twenty twenty-five capital investment plan. For the traffic signal modernization at the intersection of Route three oh nine and English Village. So at this time, it would be our recommendation the board of supervisor supervisors approves the authorization for the advertisement of the bid.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
I have a question. I have a question. This particular light is actually between Montgomery Township and Horsham. How are we sharing the costs on that?
It will be a shared intersection for the cost on that. And we also have a grant for five hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, which is part of the green light open.
Okay, excellent. I just want to make sure Horsham's doing their fair share.
Yep.
I'm sorry, does the cost that's estimated here? Include their contribution or are they compensating us? How is how is? Does that work?
They will compensate us for that.
Once we get the actual bid in and it's awarded and the project is finished, we'll present them with. An invoice for half of what we expended. So we'll take whatever the bid is less the grant. Half of that they'll have to pay.
And they're aware of this?
Yes, they are. Yes, we we gave them notice of this several years ago that this was in our capital investment plan. I saw Bill Walker not that long ago reminded him, but I also told him about the grant as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So we'll make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the bid for the traffic signal modernization at the intersection of Route three oh nine in English Village utilizing Penn Bid.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is a proclamation of Parks and Recreation Month and Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. Included in your packet is a proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month and July eighteenth. As Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation Professionals Day.
Okay, so we'll take a minute just to read the proclamation recognizing July as Park and Recreation Month and July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five as Pennsylvania Park and Recreation Professionals Day. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness. Contributes to economic vitality and fosters community identity through inclusive spaces and programs. And whereas Park Parks and Recreation supports personal growth, lifelong learning and community connection for all ages and abilities. And whereas Parks and Recreation Professionals create safe, inclusive spaces enhancing quality of life and resilience for all residents. And whereas July is nationally recognized as Parks and Recreation Month and Friday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five is designated at Pennsylvania as Pennsylvania. Park and Recreation Professional Days Day by the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society to honor their dedication. And now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township proclaim July as Park and Recreation Month. And Friday, July eighteen, twenty twenty-five, is Pennsylvania Park and Recreation Professional Day. So we hope that everyone is encouraged for all of our residents to enjoy our local parks. And we thank our Parks and Recreation Recreation Professionals and celebrate their contribution to the community. Great. Yeah.
Motion?
Oh, I have to make a motion, don't I? Motion to adopt the proclamation. Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Item number sixteen is a subject on to support of SEPTA funding and maintaining levels of service. Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. SEPTA has announced plans to cut service almost fifty percent and raise fares an additional twenty percent due to reduced funding from the state. North Wales and Lansdale Borough Council's adopted a resolution asking the state legislature to establish permanent dedicated. Sustainable funding sufficient to restore service for the entire SEPTA network. And ultimately to expand service and achieve a frequent, safe, reliable system for all riders. We've been asked by the Transportation Partnership, which is formerly PTMA, to consider adopting the resolution. If the board chooses to adopt this resolution, it would then be sent to our state senator and state representatives. And staff felt this was important to bring to the board because we do have SEPTA service that comes into our township. We have. Employees who come into certain locations in the township to work. Additionally, when SEPTA was looking at the micro transit system that which would go from the Lansdale train station. We attended every virtual meeting because we felt it was important for our employers that we can get a larger pool of applicants. So if they knew they could take the train to Lansdale. Basically, take micro transit from there, come up Welsh Road to the industrial parks, come up towards North Wales Road and to the retail establishments. Along three oh nine, we thought it was important to have a voice. It's not solely a borough issue, so that's why we're bringing it to you tonight.
Anybody have any concerns with regard to the? The adopting the resolution?
No.
I think this is important. Support. I'm going to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven supporting SEPTA funding.
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, item number seventeen, the wall that heals update. Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. Two weeks from tomorrow, the wall will be coming to Montgomery Township. It is amazing because I think I announced this to you. Before Christmas that we were one of the thirty-one sites chosen. The staff has bent over backwards to put this together. We've pretty much been independent because there are some communities who are putting the wall or hosting the wall this year. That struggled to get volunteers, that struggled to have funding, and they don't have the staff support and the board support that we do. Lieutenant Dougherty has put out a notice that the ceremonial escort will occur. Starting from Valley Forge National Park as we planned, we received our permit from them. He gave a, it's it's almost a minute by minute accounting of what's going to happen. The escort participants will mobilize at Valley Forge National Park, kickstands up at ten fifteen AM. We right now have seventy-five riders confirmed to escort them, but there are other independent motorcycle clubs that are not necessarily veteran related. That are very interested in attending, so we could have anywhere up to three hundred motorcycles escorting the caravan up Decal Pike. So from Valley Forge, it'll go to to different township. It'll go through Upper Marion Township, who have been wonderful about. You know, spreading the word, making sure they actually offer their media people that they have independently there to come out and film. It'll go then through Bridgeport Borough, the municipality of Norristown, East Thornton Township, Whitpain Township, Lower Gwinnett Township, Upper Gwinnett Township, and then arrive at the Brady Bridge in Montgomery. John Scheider with the fire department has reached out and there will be ladder arches along the way from. Multiple municipalities with fire department ladders. Once it gets here, we'll be taking some pictures along the parkway and then it will go up. The parkway across County Line Road, down our stump road. We've already invited the kids from Kids U to come out. We're giving them little flags that we have. That we did not use at our Star Stripes Remembrance Event. It'll obviously pass the Chaminde Falls, the Township Building, direct center on its way to Keenest Road to Wendell Street Park. Construction is slated to start on Wednesday, July ninth. Greg Reith has been handling that. We have other public works departments that are going to be helping assemble the wall. The Water Authority is helping. It's also WB Homes reached out and offered a crew to help us as well that day. We are just, we're thrilled with the response. In the beginning, you know, it was so far in advance, but it's really taken off now. Chief Peoples came up with the idea of doing coasters, so they're at every watering hole that we could think of. We, you know, gave them coasters to put out. Instead of, you know, advertising a beer, it's it advertises the wall that heals with a QR code. July tenth, we have our opening ceremony scheduled for ten AM. We'll have a presentation of colors courtesy of the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department. The Pledge of Allegiance followed by a national anthem. We will have an invocation by pastor Robert Shealy, who's with Keystone Church. Then we'll have opening remarks by some of our dignitaries who have been invited. And then we will have a replaying at twelve noon that day. Friday is another day that we want to talk about because we are going to have the arrival of the Liberty Warbirds Huey helicopter, Huey helicopter, excuse me. Excuse me, chief. The replay again will be at noon. We'll have a candlelight ceremony that night. Will there be a speaker from the Veterans Association to talk about PTSD? The wall will be lit up in teal to recognize those veterans who came home. And were dealing with PTSD at a time where we didn't even know what it was and at a time where the country was so fraught with conflict over the war that a lot of them. Came home to a very different situation than they would now. One of the things that struck me in the video that we watched, the little three-minute video about the wall was hate the war but not the warrior. For some of them, this is really going to be a welcome home. So we'll have a guest speaker at the candlelight ceremony. We're going to have a reading of names. Police officers and fire department who have served in the military are going to be reading the names of a hundred and thirty-six. Individuals who lost their lives in the conflict from Montgomery County. We'll have a candlelight procession with bagpipes. So we've ordered battery operated tea lights, emphasize battery operated, that everybody will have, and then they will be able to walk up to the wall. And then we'll have an invocation there. Saturday, we'll have another replay and the Huey helicopter will leave at three thirty in the afternoon to make sure they return to their origin before sunset. On Sunday, we'll have another replaying at noon. We'll have closing remarks and then the wall that heal will close at two PM and the wall will be dismantled and be off to its next destination. We couldn't do this without our community partners, specifically North Wales Water, who's providing us with clean water. For all of our volunteers and staff to be able to have, you know, to drink and not have to have ten thousand water bottles. So. We did order aluminum water bottles that have the wall that heal logos logo on them. We have ordered umbrellas, clear umbrellas for our dignitaries in the event that it rains. We have ponchos for staff in the event that it rains, but we are hoping that July will stay dry for us. We're going to have an, we have an incident action plan that we worked up through Chief Wegman. We did a tabletop exercise with the county, so we went over different scenarios that could come up and how we would handle them and who would handle them. And every, everybody has just been there giving us air-conditioned tents. We've had in-kind donations. We have six. Electric golf carts that are being provided by Tegan Golf Cart for half price. So we'll have four available so that people who have mobility issues will be able to be driven up to the wall. And then we've rented wheelchairs for those because we can't take those vehicles, obviously, too close to the wall. We have thought of, I believe, everything that we could possibly think of. We have a hundred and sixty-eight volunteer slots and as of today, a hundred and sixty-five have been filled. Which is, you know, they, the wall people, and I say this because I'm really proud to be part of Montgomery Township. They asked us for basically our game plan because they can't get over how we've done this. And how we've met not only our metrics, but we have exceeded all our deadlines. So we were well ahead to the point where we felt a little neglected, but understanding that there were other communities that were really struggling and needed more of their attention. So that Tuesday morning, so two weeks from tomorrow, we'll be meeting out at the park at seven AM. To go over one final logistics with people from the foundation. Then we will drive over to Valley Forge via the Turnpike and. Get established there to be there. Our Public Works will have a bucket truck there to take pictures of the memorial arch with the. Procession in front of it because unbeknownst to me, you can't fly a drone over a federal park. So that shot my idea down literally about having one of our drones over there. But in true Montgomery Township staff fashion, they pivoted and came up with another plan. We reached out to other photographers to take pictures along the way. We've invited people to take photos. The beautiful thing about this route is there's so many municipalities with sidewalks along the way, so people will have safe places to come out and watch the procession go through. So at this point now, we're only, we're meeting again this week and we'll be talking about feeding the volunteers, feeding the staff and moving on from there.
Fantastic.
So I, I, as I shared with with you guys, I've had an opportunity to be a part of several of the meetings and when I tell you this team. If one didn't think about it, the other did and just kind of, as she said, pivoted and moved and it's been amazing to be a part of, maybe a part of, to sit there and listen and just. All of the brilliancy around the table, putting it together and making it happen. I am. Thrilled to be a part of this township because it was, it has really been. And it's been, I feel, just honoring that, you know, just making sure that we don't miss anything and that our veterans walk away. Like they really took care of us and and they did it well. So. Stay tuned.
Yeah, this is such a point of pride for our community, but more so for the veterans who deserve to have this kind of a welcome long overdue. But I also want to make, if it's not raining, those umbrellas are, could be used for shade. So.
Well, they're clear. They're clear umbrellas because we did not want to have any, I did not want to have anybody's view impeded because we all pop up black umbrellas.
So it might have some shade, but.
But there there will be cooling tents and they're very large tents from the county. Bill, how big are they? I'm sorry, let me put you on the spot.
Nice. Okay, that do.
And the MSC has offered that they will have somebody here, you know, available. So they can't necessarily station. And, you know, an ambulance here the whole time because of calls, but they will make sure that there's somebody here to handle like. Something like a bee sting, somebody who might have, you know, diabetic incident, somebody who just faints from the heat. Anything that we might, you know, we're hoping that we don't have heat like we're expecting these next couple of days. I'm looking long term and I'm thinking, you know, it's all relative and hopefully we'll get like eighties, maybe low nineties. But the nice thing is because it's twenty-four hours, people can come early in the morning before the heat is better. They can come. Later in the day. Lucy Gonzalez is working with different groups who wanted to have tours established. We talked about bringing some of the older kids from Kids U down. As far as like donations, Streamlight, which makes flashlights. We reached out to them. We were going to purchase flashlights, hoping maybe we'd get a discount. They donated them. So they gave us the Big Mag flashlights. That recharge that will keep charging. And then they also gave us small like pen light ones for all the volunteers who work at night. And they have the wall that heals logo on them, which we did not ask them to do that, but they did. So. That alone has, I think, a value of like five thousand dollars. So we, you know, people, when they heard really what it was about, the more they understood, really wanted to help out. So.
I ran into State Rep Joe Webster again recently and he reiterated his interest in coming and one of the. I ran into State Rep Joe Webster again recently and he reiterated his interest in coming and one of the overnight shifts. And also sponsoring like donuts and, and things. So if we could.
Make a note, absolutely.
I have an overnight slot available to everyone. Get the donuts.
Yeah, this is not going to be known as the healthiest thing we've ever done in terms of food, but you know, the beautiful thing here is, you know, we. So Home Depot heard we're doing this and they're donating a whole bunch of Gatorade for us, you know, bottles of Gatorade. Because if we need people to, you know, sustain with electrolytes, we want to have that available. So we've just been really fortunate. Bucksmont Reynolds is giving us the chairs for the opening ceremony. So two hundred chairs that we don't have to pay for. But our roads foreman, we were talking about what if the weather's not great, what if it's been wet? He went to Home Depot and looked at, you know, putting down like the artificial grass that comes on the roll. That we could just put enough there to be able to put the chairs on so that people aren't sinking. So again, like everybody's just, it's not like, well, that's not my area. If somebody had an idea, you know, they brought it to the table and we either said, yes, we can do this, or maybe there's a better way. But there was always a discussion and now everybody's just rolling up their sleeves and we're going to get it done.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have our item eighteen, review of costs associated with expansion to a full career fire department. Chief Wegman.
Want me to start?
I, it doesn't.
So at your April twenty eighth meeting, Chief Wegman provided an overview and an update on the need to expand the fire department. He referenced the proposal for career staffing, which is again included in your packet. This was also presented at the Public Safety Committee in May. And finding a staff, we've had an estimate of the cost for this expansion using Chief Wegman's staffing recommendations of six firefighters on a squad. And the terms of the current collective bargaining agreement. Benefit costs were calculated based on current premiums, projected premium increases. And for health insurance and equal mix of participant classifications, meaning so many would be solely the employee, so many would be employee and spouse, and so many would be family. Based on the numbers provided in our current assessed valuation, we've calculated what kind of additional revenue we would need to fund this. Bill is here tonight to talk to you about the logistics and also some information that he's gathered. As a result of really doing a deep dive into our volunteer situation, our response times. One of the things that the chief talked to me about and it really sort of resonated with me is that a resident of Montgomery Township. Should not have to be expecting one level of service Monday through Friday when our career staff are in place. But a different level of service and response time will weekends when the volunteers are taking this on. And the, the nature of so many things, it's sort of a perfect storm. We've spread out. So not everybody in Montgomery Township has lived here forever. So some of the older communities, you have like fourth generation firefighters. We don't necessarily have that. We have people who are pulled in so many different directions between their careers, their required, their obligations with their families. People who are caring for parents now who are aging, so that's another pull on them. Children who were in activities and, 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 you know, Bill was just speaking sort of anecdotally, but again, it hit me, you know. To become a firefighter, you need almost two hundred hours of training before you can even go on the truck. So I could do that or I could perhaps coach my daughter's softball team or soccer team where I just show up on weekends or show up on practices. And it doesn't take that inordinate amount of time when I might not already have the bandwidth for something like that. Additionally, we do rely on mutual aid, but there are other communities who are also struggling to get trucks out. So Bill, if you want to share some of your numbers, you know, in terms of the staffing and, you know, the calls and the scratches and the callbacks, that would be great.
Yeah, thank you. I want to start by saying we have great volunteers. We have volunteers that are really dedicated. And our system though is flawed that it's inconsistent with volunteers responding. And therefore it creates a service gap. And that service gap has widened significantly over the last three years. This year, twenty twenty five, the response time for a volunteer engine to get on scene in Montgomery Township. Is nine minutes and forty nine seconds. That's almost a minute past the national recommended standard of nine minutes for a municipality our size. In twenty twenty three, that arrival time was eight minutes and thirty six seconds for an engine to get there. Not a fire chief, an engine, a suppression vehicle. So in, in a year and a half, we have drastically seen a change in response times. When we have events, when there's training, when people are scheduled to be there, we do really well. Our staffing, when the station is staffed between combination times when the career staff are there and stipend times when people are there overnight. Were, you know, four, four minutes and twenty seconds for the career guys to get there. And, and really around seven minutes for the stipend shifts to get there. But it's those volunteer times that are, are significantly impacted. By, by the ability to get volunteers out and that nine minutes, forty nine seconds response time, I believe is unacceptable. For a municipality of our size with the great people we have and the, and the services we say we provide. Like we, we, we pride ourselves on public safety in Montgomery Township. We have a great police department. When there was an issue with the, the medical service corps, we helped fix it. And now we're one of the greatest ambulance providers in the region. And we need to do the same with fire because we have created a service gap that needs to be addressed. And I don't want to take anything away from volunteers. I started here as a volunteer in two thousand and six. I've been with this company. I'm a life member. But we're just, we're, we're just not providing the service we need to provide. And my fear is that if this trending continues, no matter everything we've done to try to get volunteers from federal grants. To tax incentives, to, to uniforms and gear and stipend programs. That that, that service gap is going to continue to get larger and those response times are going to continue to grow. Four minutes in the type of building construction in this town can result in a flashover situation. Where people could be killed because of the delay in the response. A firefighter's job is already ridiculously dangerous. We know that. You know that, just like a police officer. But now we're, we've created a situation where the type of construction in Montgomery Township lightweight trust. And the potential for flashover, which means total involvement with, as it, as it continues to grow significantly. Doubling in size every thirty seconds, we're also putting our volunteers at greater risk for injury or death. Because of the allowance of the response times to be around ten minutes. If you ask me, Bill, can you confidential, can you, can you conf, are you confident, let me say it that way. That a fire truck on the weekends is going to show up at my house? If, and the Montgomery Township fire truck is going to show up at my house, Montgomery Township to put our fire out, I can't say that. I can't say that I'm confident in that. I could tell that Lansdale may get here or Colmar, and that's the beauty of the mutual aid system. But at a ten minute response time, that, that's, that's, I can't confidentially say that we're going to get there. And it's a shame because we have worked so hard to recruit volunteers, but it's just, it's the demographics of the neighborhoods. It's the community that we've built. You know, Vinay and Adam are here as the president of the FDMT and, and the deputy chief of the FDMT. I hope in support of it. But Vinay provided me with a list of our active members so far this year in twenty twenty five. So as you're aware, activity in the fire service means someone who meets our criteria for the volunteers to be an active member. As of today for twenty twenty five, we have ten active members that live. That, that have firefighter one, okay? Ten active members that meet firefighter one. We have twelve active members that meet activity. But those two additional members don't have firefighter one. Of those, of those ten active members, we have a lieutenant who lives in Chalfont. An incident safety officer who just sold his house and moved. A captain that lives in Lansdale, Vinay, who lives in Montgomery. Another lieutenant who lives in Horsham, a battalion chief that lives in Hilltown, and Adam who lives in Montgomery. So two people are active and live in Montgomery Township and have fire one. The other two members who are active and have firefighter one are life members. So even though I say they're active, their standard for activity is drastically lower. Because they don't have to meet the same criteria because they've been a member for fifteen or more years. Both of those members average six years old. So we, we have changed significantly in the makeup of our fire department over the last twenty three years. And, you know, I've been here for a lot of it and I can tell you that we've tried everything to get volunteers. We're still getting volunteers. You probably see on our Facebook page, we just got a great volunteer from our neighborhood. Coaches his, his daughters in basketball, went through fire school every Monday, Wednesday, Sunday for six months. He's a firefighter one certified now and that's great, but he also has commitments where we do not have those people to drop everything they're doing to run to the firehouse anymore. And again, on a Monday night for drill tonight, we probably have twenty people there, ten, thanks Vinay, that's why I brought you. But, but Vinay and I and Adam have been to drills when there was thirty people there two years ago. It, it's, it's just the volunteers are, are decreasing significantly everywhere. But we're feeling the impact here because of the, of the makeup of our community. And, you know, I, I sit here before you, being the fire, the career fire chief for the last six years. Trying to do everything we can to make our combination department work. I mean, we got a safer grant that pay people to come to calls and pay people for training. And we're averaging five people call and we're paying them to be there. It's, it's just not working and we have a great career staff. We've spent the last six years changing the mission of the career staff to not just be laissez faire. Let's sit around the table and wait for the alarm to go off. Now you know how assertive our career staff are, how many building inspections we've done. Our ISO rating went from a four to a two, right? ISO, that's incredible for a municipality like us.
What's ISO?
So it's the Insurance Service Office and they do property, fire property insurance. For businesses in town. So because our fire department got an ISO rating of a two. Our businesses in town pay a lower fire tax for insurance, fire insurance premium. Which is great because we were a four and now we're a two. Which a lot of municipalities, I was with some fire chiefs today that were, they want to get to a two. You know, and, and now we're striving to get to a one and I don't know if we'll ever get there because there's some things outside our control, but we're going to keep doing it. So we have done things to, to make our, 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 the, the services we provide better, to make our people better. We're just at a point where I believe we need to, to bring the department to be a full combination department. Where we have career staff, where we're guaranteeing that the fire truck is going to get to your house in Montgomery Township. At an acceptable time for a Montgomery Township resident. I mean, the national standard is nine minutes. We should be there in five, four to five minutes. People shouldn't be waiting for a fire truck to get to their house, especially because their house is on fire. And we know that as fires grow, they double in size every thirty seconds. Like I said, it's potential for a building collapse, a flashover. So we're putting our people in greater danger. And those people who are getting there ten minutes after dispatch, they're our volunteers. They, they might not have the same amount of training. Our training requirements are the same. But our careers staff train more than our volunteers. It's their, that's their profession. That's what they do. So I think that we need to seriously consider, or you need to seriously consider as the board. Moving forward with, I, I understand it's a tax increase, but we're telling people what the service is and we've demonstrated that we provide a great service. That there's no doubt that our fire department is a premier fire department. And there's no doubt that we provide more services to our community than our surrounding communities. I mean, we, we really do, I, I, I mean, I just sit back in this meeting and think about how, you know, the, the people presenting tonight said the fire department. You know, the fire, we wanted to meet with the fire department, like six years ago, nobody cared what we did. You know, we were just the guys up on the hill who ate a lot of food and waited for the emergency. Now we're so assertive and energetic and part of the fabric of the community. And I just feel that, yes, we've done all this stuff, but the response time is tragic for the municipality we live in. And I'm afraid something bad is going to happen. Because that's what we're trending to. And again, in twenty twenty three, during the volunteer shift, we were at eight minutes and thirty six seconds to get a fire truck. In twenty twenty five, we're at nine minutes and forty nine seconds. And, and this is, it's only half year statistics, but in twenty twenty four, we were at nine minutes and twenty five seconds. So it's not getting better and we've tried everything. I, I, I promise you, I've tried everything. These guys have tried everything. And the burden of this falls on those two guys right there. Because they're the two running around on the weekend answering every call. And Carolyn brought up a recall. What that means is. Somebody from the fire service got there and they determined that the fire truck wasn't needed, so they recalled them. So from a risk management point of view, a recall is a good thing, right? The fire truck didn't hit the road. But from our point of view, what we could say is we're recalling our trucks because we're not getting the truck out. So over that time period, the two and a half years, there were three hundred and six recalls, all right? Two, one hundred and fifty one of those, three hundred and six occurred during volunteer hours in Montgomery Township. Ten times we scratched. So if we put that together, that's a hundred and sixty one calls where a fire truck didn't arrive on scene. In Montgomery Township. That's not counting our mutual aid responses. That's just saying during volunteer hours. So yes, sometimes these guys get there and they realize that, hey, we don't need the truck. But I think sometimes, and you know, it, it's embarrassing to admit, but I, I do it too. Like we have a call on the weekend and I look on the app and see there's not a lot of people there. I get there as fast as I can and recall the assignment. Right? So that we're not like, oh, the truck never made it out, you know? So there are some, there are some figures within the statistics that, you know, tell, tell the picture and, and that tell the story. And the story is that our response times are increasing significantly and our responding personnel are drastically declining. In those times where we don't have people in the station.
I think too, part of it falls under, we live in a community that there is a certain amount of affluence. And it, I haven't done a formal study, it's just anecdotal. Those communities that have a strong blue collar presence are more apt to be volunteer firefighters. You start changing income levels and as I said, all these, you know, people travel for their jobs, you know? They don't live and work in the same community. They have to travel, not just for their normal commute, but you know, they, they, they're salespeople and they have clients that are out of state. The other thing is the housing prices, which is, is out of our control, but we've had two volunteers who, you know, were looking to. Go on their own and won it up in Otzville. So kudos to Otzville. You've got a great trained volunteer firefighter and the one is in Percasie.
We just lost another one to Percasie this week.
So, and you know, it's, it's sort of a perfect storm, you know, we, we, we bring, we want young people to come in. They, sometimes they stay here because they're working, sometimes they go away to college, but when they're home on breaks, they're responding to calls. And then they have to make this life decision where they're going to work and where they're going to live. And it's unfortunately not Montgomery Township. I was just up in Franconia the other day and I saw townhomes starting in the high fives. Franconia used to be the stretch where you would go, you know, because you still wanted to be in Montgomery County and it was affordable up there. You know, single, and you saw, everybody has seen, you know, Freddie Hill. You know, the big debate about do we put a smaller amount of homes in that are a million and a half plus? Or do we put a mixed use of a few hundred homes? But again, affordable has taken a very relative, it's, it's just so like what I consider affordable as a starter home is not the case anymore. And it's affecting the volunteers and, you know, on a day, on a Saturday where volunteers are out trying to live their lives. You know, they see maybe, you know, they've, they've already responded to four calls and some of them were false alarms, but you don't know that when you're getting the call there. They go out, by the time the fifth call comes in, they don't go.
Saturday is our worst response time, ten minutes, forty six seconds on a Saturday. Which in the volunteer world is the day we should be getting out because the career staff's not on. So the day, Saturday is ten minutes and forty six seconds to get a fire truck on scene. Sunday is ten minutes and five seconds.
And even the Commonwealth has recognized in Harrisburg that there's an issue. The Solicitors Office made us aware of legislation that got passed last year, which allowed municipalities to have a higher cap on their millage for EMS as well as fire. Because this is, this is across the Commonwealth. I was on a webinar last week about EMS nationwide where you're sitting at a public meeting. And an EMS chief comes in and announces to you, yeah, we're closing because we can't, we can't get trucks out or we're, we don't have enough revenue coming in. And you're just left high and dry. We saw what happened down in Delaware County, two hospitals closed and, you know, EMS. And some are trying to rely on fire, but not all fire are trained to do EMT work and, and, you know, it's just, there's just this story. And and you know, it's just, there's just this storm in in emergency services, including police. We've talked about recruitment and the challenges we've had there. But fire scares me because as a municipality, as township of the second class, we are required to provide public works, our infrastructure, our maintenance, public safety, regardless of how we do it as a three leg stool. So we're fortunate that we have EMS in our community, we have a station right here on our campus. Police, we have, I would say, the best police department in Montgomery County along with our fire department. But this scares me that on a weekend, I'm going to get a phone call that could have been avoided. And yes, it's a tax increase and nobody wants to do it, but I think if you tell residents it's solely for fire, it's a dedicated mill that's going to show up on their tax bill for fire. And they would understand because how many people in a room would say they've ever even considered being a volunteer firefighter? So how do we then put that burden on ten individuals and say, you keep us running on weekends? We solved the problem a number of years ago during the week with career staff. Um and to Bill's point, that culture wasn't working. It changed dramatically in a short amount of time. Some people left, we got some great people coming in and now they are viable parts of our community. And Bill and I have also talked that if we do go in this direction, it's possible that to supplement some of this, we make our firefighters available to some communities nearby that don't have the ability to do commercial fire inspections. And then they get billed just like anybody else would get billed to help augment, you know, the cost that we're putting out. Um right now during the week, um I don't, I hear the the trucks go by and I I don't even think twice about because it seems like no sooner the CAD on my computer drops off that says there's a call and I hear the truck on the street. I think residents have that same expectation for weekends. They want to know that if they call nine one one and they need a fire truck, it's going to be there on a timely basis. And nine minutes, you know, to somebody doesn't seem a lot, but does any of us know, even if you've been in a car accident, you know, a couple of minutes seems like, where are they, where are they, why aren't they here? So.
I have some clarifying questions.
Certainly.
Before, when you had uh mentioned this, that, you know, I guess it was April meeting, um you had quoted nineteen as the number of additional full-time uh employees as well as one HR intern. The numbers in in this report seem to be a little different. Can you clarify how many?
It would be, it's nineteen additional staff. The HR intern, she's working for us now. Um but she's uh, she works half with us and half with Chris uh doing kids use stuff and interviews and helps Chris with managing HR. She's with the fire department, she's helping, you know, work on possibly redoing our job script. Well, she's redoing our job descriptions, um looking at if this is approved to move forward. I have a list of tasks we need her to get done, uh but we're looking at nineteen, so we're looking at having.
And then her position would be done.
Right, her position is done. We've we've had really good internships over the last couple of years. We had an emergency management internship, which was Jake Millivoy. Um we had a a finance fire internship that was Kate and she did a really nice job. Um so we've been very fortunate that that Carolyn has allowed us to to have interns and this time it's working out with Chris. But we're looking at having four shifts of six people.
And you should have in your packet as a sheet that says additional staff wages and it's numbered one through nineteen. So there are nineteen positions, they're just different titles. So there's battalion chiefs, there's captains, there's firefighter one, but that makes up the nineteen.
Okay, and so also um it, we understand. It just said, it just said um in this one paragraph, the department would have to hire fifteen new full-time staff, so that was.
Right, so I put that proposal together before the recent collective bargaining agreement. And that is when we talked about having five people on a shift. But after the CBA was signed, looking at um all of the things we're placing in the collective bargaining agreement, I just felt that it would be better for us to ask for six for a shift. Um so we can, we always want to maintain four people on a fire truck. That is the goal, that is what NFPA says is the goal, two in, two out for OSHA. But also, we need to have an incident commander, so we're talking about five.
So in terms of finances, nineteen is the number.
Nineteen is the number, correct.
We're not including the cost for an HR employee.
Correct.
Okay, um and this, uh all these nineteen would be uh subject to a collective bargaining agreement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and and you know, you're proposing that we would onboard them all at one time?
Correct.
And why is that?
It's the only way that it can work with the twenty-four seven shift, the twenty, the twen- so we would have twenty-four seventy-twos. Um so they would work, which is, which is standard work schedule in the northeast part of the country. But they would work a twenty-four hour shift and then they would be off for seventy-two and then they would come back for another twenty-four hour shift. Twelves, I don't think are appropriate for firefighters because the the firefighters that work at night would basically come in and sleep. And that, I don't think we should pay people just to come in and sleep. So um with the twenty fours, their days would be structured so that uh they would get up and do their operational readiness, go out and do inspections, run training at night. But we, I don't know, with keeping, with keeping four on a truck, one is an incident commander, I don't know how you would successfully implement stages of bringing people in uh because you wouldn't meet the intention of what of what we're trying to do. So if we only brought in ten, how would I put to spread them out? Because then I wouldn't be able to get four on a truck.
Well, I mean, but the weekends seem to be the areas where we're having the most difficult uh difficulty covering and and responding promptly, you know, to the calls that are coming in.
Right.
Wouldn't um, wouldn't one possible solution, you know, in terms of phasing this over time be to kind of start with um adjusting shifts so that we have the coverage that we need on weekends?
We we could do that, um we could certainly do that, but then you're going to require more overtime and you're going to require the use of more part timers. Um or if we hire, you know, then we'll have to figure out if they're going to work tens, uh how we're going to work out schedules and shifts. I I just, I don't think um will be as attractive as an employer. That that's kind of like what Upper Mor- I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but it's kind of like what Upper Morland's doing right now, where they're just trying to fill shifts and and guys aren't sure when they're working and they're always paying overtime on Sundays and you know, it's 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 just not a good work environment when you have to work so many days in a row because you're covering weekends. We're trying to do this to implement what is best practices in our, in our field.
I just feel as of nineteen new employees is a lot to onboard at one time.
I'm ready.
And that it seems um logistically like um this is.
We want to onboard all nineteen at once. So the the way the plan is set up is that in January, we would interview for battalion chiefs and captains. Hopefully get all of those people in by March. So you're looking at four captains and four battalion chiefs, so that's eight. Then it would be the, that leadership team with John Scheider and I to to build out how we're going to do the onboarding. We would look to test, we already have worked with Buxton Reserve the weekend just to get on there, whether you say yes or no, I'll cancel it. Please say yes. Um but we would bring in those firefighters after a testing period. And then we would run a four-week onboarding daytime program where it would be eight hours on a weekday to get them where they need to be in Montgomery Township. What I would like to do is do an internal hiring first between our part timers and our volunteers who want to be full-time firefighters, because they already know our culture, they already know what we do and they already know the municipality. So therefore, yeah, we're, yes, we're onboarding nineteen new people, but between the breakup with the command staff and leadership team and the the hiring hopefully of a of a good majority of part timers, um which will probably poach from other departments because they want to come here, they want to work here. And our volunteers, several volunteers have reached out, what do I need to do to be a candidate? I think the transition will be a lot easier than um bringing in nineteen people off the street because everybody's going to come who applies to this job. It was going to be in the fire service for a while. It's not like police where they finish their act one twenty and then they just come on board. I mean, our requirements firefighter one and firefighter two alone probably precipitate that this person's been in the fire service for at least a year. So they they are firefighters.
I I have no doubt that, you know, they'll be well-trained. Um and and I, you execute incredible plans all the time and I have great faith in your ability to do so. I think however, it stresses our our resources as a township to add that many new employees at one time in one fell swoop, not to mention the impact that it's going to have on taxes for our community. And a phased approach would give us a little more time to to ease into this, create less burden on on our resources internally in terms of both HR and IT. And logistically, you know, then we also have to, we don't have the Italian facilities to accommodate all of these new people at once. And so then we might have a little more breathing room to get that feasibility study done for the facilities improvements or, you know, get the trailers in place that we might use as temporary.
I think from the building standpoint and from speaking with IT, if it wouldn't be the best case scenario, but we could make the current station work. Um Rich and I have already talked about different things that we could do um to give people the space they need. Currently, we, Upper Morland is closing the firehouse, so they gave us free lockers. So we've already talked to Public Works about hanging some more lockers on the wall. So you're right, it wouldn't be the 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 most um conducive environment, but it it would work. I mean, I've been to Upper Marion, they're in a Cube Smart a- and and they're working at twenty-four seven plus a medic. Um and we we already are a step ahead of them as far as facilities are are concerned. I understand the phasing point of view and I I understand your point about phasing it in and it's not a burden. I just think that if the goal is um to put four people on a fire truck and have an incident commander, which we know firefighters get killed because lack of control, lack of command and lack of accountability. Um that's what kills firefighters. So that incident commander is key. I I just don't know, if you were to, if I will, I don't want to, I will do whatever you tell me to do and I will be grateful to take. But I think if we are to do this right and from the onset and to set the standard and comply with national best practices and standards and and to ensure that we have the people we need to do the job right, then I don't think I can. When when Northampton started, they didn't phase in, they were daytime and went twenty-four seven. When Upper Providence, they did the same thing. So we're not doing anything that the people who have the same kind of demographics that we do have done. Um they've done it the way that I'm proposing to do it and have been successful. But you have other municipalities like Norris Town that bring on two a year a- and and, but they're not getting.
That's not going to help us.
I I I just, I just don't know how it works that way.
So, you know, I think a phased approach gives us better time to to put those plans in place and including our facilities plans because you have a robust, um you know, a- ambitious suggestion in terms of the battalion or potentially a, you know, an additional battalion, all of which needs to be thought through. And I, and you know, you need to add to your team in order to do that and to have all of those minds around the table. I'm not saying, um you know, I I'm supportive of this move and I I think we are seeing it across the state, across the country, that more and more departments have to move this direction. We are required by uh the MPC to provide these services. You know, and so we have to provide these services and and you know, we we can't unfortunately continue to rely on the volunteers to perform those services. People just aren't volunteering to do it anymore and you've made that case. Um so here we are saying, I I see the writing on the wall here, we're going to have to move in this direction. I just would like to see us take um a, you know, a a more cautious approach to this and one that doesn't have um, you know, such a a big bite at the end of the day uh in into people's wallets, you know, initially.
So as far as the feasibility study for the building, you know, we talked about it this afternoon actually. Um we have three quotes and what we would like to do is we would plan to, depending on how this discussion went, put that in next year's budget, do a feasibility study, do all the interviewing we needed to do, visit, you know, fire stations to make sure we were getting what we wanted and then look at possibly bringing it for the board in twenty twenty-seven. Because I'm very cognizant of the fact that when we borrowed the money for the infrastructure and all the capital we needed because when this board changed, we discovered that we had no capital improvement plan. So we developed a five-year plan, we borrowed fifteen million dollars at under two percent, which, you know, is amazing now. Um but we then, in the course of going over things, we found out that we constructed a rec center that had debt, that we didn't put a revenue stream in for that. And I had to come to the board and explain that, even though it happened well before any of us were here, that that just could not happen. That would be like taking out a second mortgage on your home and not having the additional revenue for it. And the board looked at the numbers and said, yes, we need to do this. So I'm very sensitive about this. I I guess in my mind, to do a twenty-four seven, I don't know, other than what Bill said about phasing it with the command staff first and then the operational side, I don't know how we would phase it um and not be, not get grieved on the collective bargaining agreement and not have some of the same issues because people don't have a steady idea of when they're going to work.
Yeah, I think the overtime is going to be a killer factor.
And that's if people take it.
Right.
Uh and I mean, I don't mean to put Chief Peoples on the spot, but it is a very different demographic. There used to be a time where people took all the overtime they could get because, you know, police and fire were traditionally paid very poorly, so they needed every hour of overtime. Now it's more about work-life balance, work-life integration. People would much rather have the time off to be with their families than take overtime. And I don't want to rely on that and then have to come to you and say, we have a problem, we couldn't get a truck out again because people wouldn't take the overtime shifts.
I mean, we we have the bunk rooms and for four or five on a shift, the bunk rooms can fit those people. Um we have the office space. I was just recommending that if we're going to continue as a true combination department, we have to really give some thought on space for all of us, including the volunteers. But if we needed to make it work now, we absolutely can make it work. We've al- we've always made it and we have two stations. So if it got to the point where like we're too crowded, we have two stations.
If we phase it, does it, does it improve our response time? Or we don't have enough for that to happen yet?
So NFPA says for our National Fire Protection Services, for us, we need to be on scene within nine minutes and have fifteen people on the scene of a fire, alright? Our fifteen people count, mutually can count, right? That so so we're, we always will bring in mutually, just like we're always going to go out on mutually. Um to answer your question, i- if we phase it, I don't know if we'll be able to get the 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 six on the shift, the four on the truck that that I'm proposing here. And again, I it's not Bill's way, this is best practices, this is the work schedule that's been proven to work in the northeast corridor. Other municipalities have done this and have done it well. So you know, I I understand the phasing part of it, but I also think that if we're going to do it, we should do it.
But it's a, you know, phasing would just be like a temporary, you know, like so it's our three-year plan to get to the full-time twenty-four seven outfit that you have outlined, that's the long-term goal. It's just doing incrementally that makes it a little um less impactful, you know, uh from a financial standpoint. And also gives us maybe some more time for the feasibility study to come back and for us to, you know.
I just hope we still have candidates and that and that's, I mean, that's the other issue that I think I've talked about before. Upper Providence, Warminster, Northampton, Warrington, Upper Marion, uh they're all hiring. And and we're going to run into the issue that the police, the Newtown. Um and I think more municipalities are going to transition to combination. So I'm just worried three years from now, what the candidate pool is going to look like.
Well, I think that you're a fantastic boss. And I know that, you know, people want to work in Montgomery Township because we are a really desirable community and we've, we've created a great culture in our fire department. Uh so I I would think that people will be as eager to work in Montgomery Township two years from now as next year.
I hope.
You never know, other people are going to be coming into the marketplace too. So I I wouldn't, I wouldn't let that hold you back from trying to think creatively on how we might be able to phase this over two or three years.
If we go with the plan, what what's the perfect world response time? Like right now, you're at my house in nine minutes, forty-nine seconds. If you hire all these people, we go with your plan, when are you at my house?
I think if we look at what the career staff gets your house in, four minutes and twenty-five seconds. I mean, Captain Backland has them out the door in sixty seconds. No matter what, they're on that truck and that truck is on three oh nine and sixty seconds. So I would think at night it'd be delayed. I mean, our stipend program is at your house in seven minutes. I think with the career. I think with the career staff, um they might be out a bit, a little bit quicker. Uh because sometimes stipend people are allowed to come from home as long as they live within four minutes of the firehouse. Um so I think, you know, daytime response, I think the trend has uh at four minutes and twenty-five seconds is a good barometer. And I think at night, we're gonna be at your house six minutes. I I I mean, probably less than that. Um I mean, one of the things that's great about our station is is that the bunk rooms are so close to the engine bay. Uh the guys can and girls can get right out on the trucks, whereas other stations, particularly some of the new ones that I've been to. It takes them forever to get from the bunker into the fire truck. So that's something that we're gonna consider uh if we ever, if we ever have an addition. But um I just think right now, ten minutes for the fire truck to get to your house on the weekends.
Time is what you don't have. We we you talked about injury, you talked about death. What you see on the other hand as well is the longer you take to get there, the more of the home or the structure burns. The more property damage, the more insurance. It goes back then to the owner of that building as well that is dealing with that. And I saw my son deal with it a few years ago when his house caught fire and. It's amazing first, the way you guys all work together and pull together to get the job done. I was amazed watching the department in Eagleville, like just doing what they needed to do when they had few different. Trucks out there as well. But then afterwards. Fires out. Now my son's dealing with it. And if they had gotten there sooner, if they had gotten there later, like all of that. Comes into play as well. From what I see on our estimates for taxes, and I hate. Hate hate to raise taxes, but when it's something as important as somebody's life and somebody's property, I will consider that. When I see the breakdown of anywhere from, what was it, twenty dollars to forty-two dollars a month? Is what it comes down to on a property. Here, here, where do I, where do I pay the extra tax? Because if I need you to be there because my house catches fire. I need you there.
I think, I mean, we have a chart, like an average Canterbury house, it's two hundred thirty, two hundred thirty-seven dollars a year. On up to the bigger houses in Wendell Stray at five hundred three dollars a year. I would rather see you implement it the way you want it, not a little bit here, a little bit there. And have one tax increase. I think if we did a three-year, four-year, however, we could figure out how to stage it. Then we're increasing taxes every year. No one wants a tax increase. No one does. But I think for this. I would hope that people could understand it and grow to figure out how to pay it. I mean, um rather than, okay, this is what's gonna happen this year and then next year and then next year. I I think personally, I think it would be easier for people to to have one tax increase and to be able to plan for that. Um rather than, you know, looking at us and hating us for raising taxes every year.
And our fire chief is the expert here. We all have different professions that we are in or have been in. That we can say, yo, you phased this, you do this. But you're our expert here, like. You're the one who has investigated, you have been doing this. I see, for me, I see you as the leader and I know you are to the department.
Well, he's the one that goes and sleep at night thinking about this, like that's.
And he's the one running on the weekends as well, so, yeah.
We have heard though from people who are following this, who are on fixed incomes. A lot of the residents across the street in the Shammany Falls, uh who are very concerned about this and then that it's going to have on them. So I I don't think that we can be, you know, callous here and just assume everybody can afford this. And taking some, uh giving some consideration to people who are on fixed incomes, I think is an important part of this deliberation.
You're speaking to someone that's on a fixed income, so I know exactly what you mean and it's not being callous, it's being realistic.
Well, you're not living in a mobile home though and and I'm sorry, there is, there is, you know, a difference.
Well, I would think that everyone over there in the Shammany Falls, yes, many are on a fixed income. But given the fire that they have just seen and the loss that community has felt. Um I I think that people can understand this. No one wants it. I wish we had a better answer and I wish more kids could afford to live here. You know, more young adults who would be our volunteers, but there's not even a starter home under five hundred thousand dollars. Like, my son was a volunteer. If he still lived here, he wouldn't be able to afford to live here and be on that. I mean, it it's just a different time. One of the things that the board had asked, and we talked about this before, was how we would get the word out, how we would explain to people. And Bill and I were talking and, you know, yes, we can always have a a meeting here solely to discuss that, but how many people are really gonna come out? So then we were talking about doing a podcast, doing a couple podcasts even to talk about the need and to talk about. How this was discussed, to reference this meeting that if people wanna watch the discussion that occurred amongst the board. We didn't come to this with, you know, um just like, oh, well, we'll just raise taxes. Oh, this is just what it is. Um I just know there are other levels of government that every year, I'm not gonna name which one, raise taxes. Three percent, five percent, with no reason, just other than they need to make a budget shortfall or because their costs are going up. We're just telling you specifically for fire services, we think now is the time to do it. And that there's a plan and I feel like I have the right person. In charge over there that to make sure that it's successful and that a year from now, we're talking about it. You know, we're saying it was the right thing to do. Um I'm very cognizant of the people in the Shammany Falls, but I also know they take advantage of. The fire services, you know, they, we go over there and we change out their smoke detectors and, you know, calls for service, you know, every month. You know, for falls and things like that, that the fire also respond to. Um and I can't make a judgment about people and where they live and why they live. Um I don't know that everybody over there. Feels it the same way with one voice and I would hope that if they listen to us and heard our explanation, they would understand that it's a necessary evil. But we're also, the board all lives here, they're all gonna have to pay it. All the employees who live here are gonna have to pay that tax increase as well.
I think that it's altogether realistic to come up with a phased plan that's less of a financial impact on the community. That takes into consideration the needs of people who are on fixed incomes. It still uh gets you to your your full-time twenty-four-seven. I don't think that it's allowed to ask you to go back and revisit the plan. And yes, you are the professional and this is your job. I would just, you know, encourage you to take another look at how we might phase this. Just to um to make it a little less of a financial burden on the community.
I think it'd be nice to put the word out, like you said, to have meetings. Can we have a meeting at the Shammany Falls?
That that's what I was.
Like, why not go over there and let's have a meeting.
And maybe at the HOAs as well.
Most vulnerable people can hear why we have to do this and, you know.
If you're talking about having a board meeting at these locations with the majority of.
An informational meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly an informational meeting wouldn't require the legal notices or the public notices because you wouldn't be doing any deliberations. If you're just reporting, you're not gonna be doing any, as long as it doesn't fall into that. But it is something that could just be advertised as a special meeting as well at a different location. But again, that's assuming that you have a majority of the board there at those particular meetings. But you you could take the show on the road, if you will, with.
Right, but two of us could come without a forum.
Two, two of you could come without a forum or all five of you could attend as long as you're not. Deliberating and you're not discussing the policies uh of of what's going to happen.
Yeah, I think we should work on, I I think that the public needs to have more information. When they don't have information, let's talk the high school renovation that went through. Um they did try to have a lot of public information, but there was a lot of disinformation out there as well. And I think that people kind of run with those facts or not facts. And I think that people get carried away with, oh, it's gonna, you know, unnecessary. They're they're trying to put us through too much with tax increases and so forth. So I wanna make sure that we have. Give the information, there can't be questions about what what it is, that that we have transparency. We're giving the information to the, to the people and then, you know, pu- putting it out to them with. As much clarity as we can.
We have members of the public here. We should probably uh ask any of them if they would like to make public comment.
Please do. Everybody that's here, yes, no, phase it in.
Vinae?
We want our house, we want you to to get to our house in four minutes or nine minutes.
Almost ten minutes.
All right, Steve Fideli, that's in Frank E D E L E, but the little lady's gone, so I don't think it matters. Throw some numbers around. And um I'm just curious, you were saying nine and a half minutes. What's on a sample size of?
Um it's, I think it was sixteen hundred fifty-six calls.
Sixteen hundred, so far this year?
No, no, over three, over two and a half years.
So you're nine and a half minutes, you claim that it was worse on Saturday and Sunday.
That's correct, yeah.
And what were those numbers?
That was from three hundred and ninety-eight calls.
But I mean, what was the average call time for Sunday?
On a Sunday, it was ten minutes and five seconds. On a Saturday, it was ten minutes and forty-six seconds.
Unacceptable. I'm not certain why you're saying. Seven minutes because the.
Seven was, seven was stipend.
NFPA is three hundred and twenty seconds? Is what they.
Well, that's out the door time, that's shoot time and response time. I'm talking about on-scene time.
That's from uh the nine eleven call to being on the scene.
Right.
They say three hundred and twenty seconds is what the standard is.
Well, that's se- so there's two, there's two standards, seventeen ten, seventeen twenty, um and we follow under seventeen twenty.
But we're not even close.
Correct.
The weekend's really bad.
Right.
What then, what's the average during the week?
Well, for volunteer hours during the week, it's uh ten minutes on a Monday, eleven minutes on a Tuesday, eight minutes on a Wednesday. Nine thirty on a Thursday and eight minutes and forty-two seconds on a Friday.
And with nineteen people added to the staff. That'll bring it down to five minutes?
I hopefully four minutes and twenty-five seconds.
Does that cannibalize the existing volunteers? Is this with the volunteers? It seems like it's on its own without the volunteers at all.
So we are, we, a total. Uh um let me unpack that a little bit. Uh total replacement, no. Uh supplement, yes. So you're right, we're not gonna have a need for volunteers uh on that first-out engine. But we are gonna continue to operate as a combination department and hopefully the volunteers will continue to come out and get the ladder truck out. Um also, in looking at planning for the career schedule. We're gonna make sure that training is the same time every night, no matter what platoon's on, so that volunteers are gonna be involved. So we, there's, I have no, um, I'm no way cutting out the volunteers. Vinae and Adam are both volunteers. Um we're just going to add to the staffing and increase the combination staff and then the volunteers will supplement. Right now, it's, the volunteers are supplemented by the career staff. We're gonna swing that pendulum to where the career staff will be supplemented by the volunteers. So it'll be a true combination department.
Nineteen's the number that gets it done.
Four, yes, nineteen is the number that gets it done.
I I would just think you'd, you'd wanna focus on the weekends because it's when the time is bad.
Right, and I I under- I understand what you're saying, just focusing on the weekends and and. But but we still have to hire staff to do that. They work ten-hour shifts right now. So they're working Monday through Friday, ten-hour shifts, right? So we would have, we would want six on the weekend. So then you don't, you're not gonna have a shift rotation, you're just gonna fill people in to make it to get their forty hours or whatever it's to be.
I I'm not tired of schedules, I'm not certain how that works, but it seems like that's where the need is. And I, and I understand, uh fire doubles in size every ninety seconds, so. Okay, it's like Ohm's law or something like that.
Mm-hmm, thirty.
Candle on, you know, most mattresses these days are are made of carbon-related materials. So essentially, your mattress that you're sleeping on is equivalent to five and a half gallons of gasoline.
Right, and all, and most of the construction in Montgomeryville is lightweight trust construction, right? My most, most type five construction. So that's even scarier when collapse times are between seven and seventeen minutes.
No, no, I I understand, it's just to get it down to. I mean, when you're waiting, a minute's out, uh out of question. So I, but I'm just seeing how it could be slid in. Does this work? You know, but what's the impact? Start with five. Start with nineteen?
We have, we have, we have seven already.
Okay, well, and and what was the impact of that?
I, what was, when the department was founded in two thousand and two, the township founded it as a combination department.
And what was the impact on on response times?
I mean, I I, we were a different fire department. We were Colmar at the time. The township made a decision to hire career staff during the day and to separate themselves from Colmar Fire Company and start their own fire company.
And is there? I know fires aren't distributed normal, it's called the Poisson distribution, but is there time of day? More likely than other times of day?
Um for us, our distribution uh is really nights and weekends for fires. Um but that being said, you know, most of the buildings in town are sprinkled. So because of that sprinkler, you know, the the daytime fires are kinda cut down because of the fact that. Uh the fire suppression systems are in place. Um but I would say that, and you know, most of our fires start from outside in, cigarettes and mulch. Um those types of things. But yeah, our our distrib- our distribution would show that our our fires are nights and weekends.
It's kinda like on a national level, that's what I've seen. I work for the largest reinsurer in the world. We cover more fires than anybody. We don't start, we just cover. So when we look at things like that, it's like increase the presence when the fires are most likely as opposed to twenty-four-seven. And I'm not certain if that's been given any consideration or. It probably has.
It's been given a lot of consideration and, you know, in planning for this over the years. We needed to plan for a fire company that is an all-hazards agency and does more than just suppression efforts, right? Because we live in a community where fire education and community risk reduction, to me, is more paramount than anything else. So I can't give you statistics on fires that never started because of how much work our people have done being ambassadors. For community risk reduction. So so when you get a firefighter in Montgomery Township, you're not just getting a firefighter who's waiting for the alarm to get off. You're getting a firefighter who's doing inspections, he's doing pre-planning, they're training all the time. Those guys are never in the firehouse, they're always out in the truck doing something.
No, I I I understand. We had a company called Hartford Steam Boiler and people took insurance with Hartford Steam Boiler. Not to fix it after the fire, but to have somebody come out and inspect their plant so the fires don't happen.
Right.
I think prevention is a bigger part.
I mean, last year we did over eleven hundred fire inspections. I mean, it's, it's a lot. Thank you.
Do um, do we ever see a a discount in our homeowner's insurance if we change from that two to a one?
I don't think it affects homeowner rates. I think it's just business, business fire. Um it's still, it's still, I mean, some fire departments put their number on their fire trucks, they're so proud of it. Um I I'm not, you know, man, I'm not like a big showy type person, I, but Norris Town has Cl- ISO rating two on all their fire trucks and chiefs cars. And it's a big deal. Um and it took a lot of work to get there. So we, I mean, we have a great staff. It's, there's no doubt about that.
Chief, you mentioned that um other municipalities did this kinda all-in-one versus the phased approach. Um do you know anywhere, I heard you mention Norris Town, but it, and maybe that's the example. Do you know anywhere that attempted to do a phased approach? And how's it going? Number one. And then, and then just with regard to what we're talking about and deciding on tonight. Can it be a two-pronged approach, meaning, um you know, we still um. Give the green light to move forward with doing the um, the uh. Job descriptions and everything, moving forward to the nineteen employees. But we still, as we're calling it, take our show on the road so that we get out with the community. Because at the end of the day, we're gonna need that information, whether it's voted on to do all nineteen at once or um break it up. But can we do two things at one time, kinda thing?
I, I think to answer your first question, with North Hampton and Upper Providence, um going all in. Um they're, they've been successful. Um Upper Marion, uh you know, started day and now they went all in. I think in speaking with my colleagues who are phasing in firefighters, and of course, they're like me, they would just like to have them all at once. But they'll make it work however they're given, I mean, in in the end, I work for you, so we'll do whatever you tell me to do, and I'm just happy to be here. but they'll make it work however they're given, I mean, in, in the end, I work for you, so, I'll do whatever you tell me to do, and I'm just happy to be here. But, but to do it, but to do it the right way, uh, I think is, is to just hire them and let's get going and, and, and do what best practices indicate and, and be the best that we can be and, and show our residents that, yes, we did raise our taxes, but you are getting a premier service and an essential service, public safety's an essential service. You know, man, I live in town, I, I want the fire truck there quick too. Um, I pay myself to work sometimes. So, um, on the other hand, I love getting out and seeing community and talking to our community, uh, partners and our friends. I mean, we've tried to host community seminars multiple times, uh, during the last six years, and nobody has shown up. We've had them at the rec center, we've had them at our firehouse. Uh, the only time that, that they're successful, I think, is when we go to HOA meetings, like, like you mentioned, and when we go to the Shammany Falls. But that has taken us, I had to reach out, Mary Ann gave me the email contacts for every HOA in the township, and we sent an email like, hey, we're willing to come out and talk, and a couple people followed up, so we happened out. But I, I mean, I'm sure if you're talking tax increase, everybody will come out, right?
Thinking if you say, you know.
But I, I, I have no, if, if I'm allowed to represent the township, which I do every day on this issue, I have no problem going out and talking to people. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty passionate about their safety. Uh, and, and I don't want anything bad to happen to my, my neighbors in my community. I mean, uh, the Shammany Falls, when that burnt down, I mean, that, that, I kinda took that personal. I felt like I let them down. I don't know, uh, what we could have done to change that because of the pre-arrival fire conditions, but, you know, seeing all those people without a clubhouse for over a year, but then being invited to come to their opening ceremony as probably the guy who should have not been there. Uh, but anyway, uh, you know, so I have no problem going out, and I would be happy to do that. Uh, but I think you're right, I mean, I, I would wanna know, um, and I would want, if I was a taxpayer, I, I would wanna know why my taxes are being increased and what I'm gonna get for this service.
I'm just, just trying to add on to the whole idea of how do we just get it out there to say, you know what, without a doubt, whether it's three years or one year, it's a tax increase. And, and, but here, here's what it, it's going towards, here's what it's, you know, going to, um, take care of. I think with knowledge comes understanding. And so, you know, if folks, I'm, I'm, know, okay, yeah, we had, and you mentioned the school district with it. It wasn't until I got more information that I was like, okay, I, I see what they're trying to do here. Initially, I was like, are you kidding me? Because we're impacted too by these increases, we are impacted as well. We don't get a discount or anything, we're impacted as well. So, but it was until I had more information. So that's where I'm saying, just a, a two-pronged approach, meaning, let's do that. But then I say, let's still, you know, move forward with, um, the, uh, getting the job descriptions in, in place and, and all that.
And that was.
We're gonna go there anyway, again, whether it's one year, two year, three year, that's the goal.
And I think, um, as, as, uh, this long could tell you is that public safety felt the same way. They were supportive of the expansion in Public Safety Committee, but they wanted us to do a pretty significant public safety campaign around it. Um, and I'm, I'm ready to start that, I just didn't wanna start anything until obviously I was here in front of you tonight, so. Um, but, but I know the, Carolyn and I.
Sooner they know.
Hi, Eric Pelletier from one oh three Pemberton Court. Um, I'm an information nerd, so. I read through all your figures and seeing that, seeing the thirty-eight percent tax increase, that's a big number. But for public safety, I would, I'm in support of it. But I think you're gonna be better off having information. If we can spend that time to, to get out there, and people want it, want the information, they're gonna come. I mean, I think we're, if the public who are here, we're biased, we're here to get information, so we're interested in it. But I think the more, you at least make the attempt to get information from residents and see who is impacted. Because there's conflict, not conflict, there's difference of opinion of five of you, which there should be, this is a difficult issue. We're all for public safety, and I think, yeah, I'd rather have a truck in my house in four minutes too. And you've been at my house a couple times, we recovered an oxide detector that was just bad, so I felt bad about that, sorry about that.
That's okay, every day.
But I appreciate that. Yeah, so the more information you have, the better, that's always a good thing, I think, it's, it's helpful, as long as we have the time to do that. And explaining it in the simplest terms. This is what it costs to do this, this is what, the, the response times, that's, that's alarming. Here, you know, going from four minutes to ten minutes, but, so as much information as you give, that's just my two cents, so. Thank you for all your deliberations and thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, Vina, just one second, I just wanted to let everyone know, I just got a text from someone in a Shammany, and they said, oh, but just let them know, we didn't have sprinklers, so don't worry about.
They do now.
So I just wanted you to know, they're all watching, and they're, they don't, will do accountable. They still love you though.
So my name is, uh, Vina Setti, so I live in a wood hollow. Um, I've been a township president, I'm, uh, 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 for most of my life, my dad owned a business here, uh, uh, long ago. Um, I've been with the fire department since two thousand and five, uh, twenty years this month, actually.
Thank you for those twenty years.
Yeah, no problem. Um, uh, 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 so it's been my pleasure. Um, seeing the department transition from where we were, um, when I first joined, uh, to where we are today, uh, it's been, it is tremendous. Bill did a lot with the, the career staff, made that transition, um, possible, and incorporated with the volunteers, and I made it amazing, you know? Um, I do agree that we do need to go to that twenty-four seven, um, uh, uh, twenty-four seven, uh, seventy-two schedule, um, mainly for the fire protection for the residents. Um, the need is there. Constantly, uh, we are struggling to get members out. Uh, to get volunteers out, to come to calls, to come to trainings. I mean, it's not just the, the firefighter one that you have to go through, it's, we have training every week. Uh, sometimes two, three, three times a week, um, on top of y- your basic firefighter one, um, and stuff like that, but you have events, you have, uh, uh, monthly meetings, you have committee meetings. So an average volunteer may spend an additional twenty hours a week on top of the forty or fifty hours they put at their full-time job, plus the time with the family and other sporting events. People aren't able to do that anymore, you know, and it's, it's getting harder to recruit those members in. We are getting the members in, I think we voted in three members in last month. They're all sixteen years old. Okay, it was great, because that younger generation is what we need. But when they're eighteen, they're gonna go to college. They may return in the summertime, they may not. They may go a, a, across the country. But then after that, they may go anywhere else, they may not stay in the township. But if they do, they'll only be here maybe a year or two before they're going someplace else. Um, Bill talked about a stipend program. Uh, our stipend program goes from ten PM till five thirty AM. Okay, the firefighters are, are either, uh, staying at the firehouse or, uh, they're coming from home as long as they live within four minutes. Um, members are, are, are being, uh, slightly compensated for that, okay? It's fifty dollars, you know, it's nothing too much. But to see the holes that we have in our stipend schedule at night, uh, to where we're sending emails, at multiple emails a week, to have coverage, to get people to fill in the shift, we're sending text messages out at nine o'clock at night, hey, you need to shift to ten o'clock, you know?
We filled the shift better when we paid fifteen dollars an hour than now when we pay fifty.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah, we're having so many more holes, so many more people taking, and people are taking the shifts, you know, because they don't wanna leave the crew, uh, stranded with two or three people. So, so we have those four people, but there are times where, uh, 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 myself or Adam are filling in as a firefighter role, to where now we're technically on the truck, and we may, we may respond and meet them at the scene. Um, we're not on the truck, so we're taking out of the command op, operations, because we need to go inside and be with the crew. So, that limits the number of, uh, command, command presence on the exterior to do all the other various tasks. Um, a, a, and what that, 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 that schedule of seeing those gaps, um, and I see it now, it's more so that people are being burnt out. You know, and if we don't make this change sooner than later, I'm afraid of something even worse happening. Um, in the event, and I'm, I don't wanna say it, you know, but if something ever happened down the road, a township resident suffered a loss, a fatal loss, and we had the opportunity to make this right now, why wouldn't we? Why would we wait two, three, four years to hire more people? It has to be done. The volunteers will still be here, there's, there's a group of volunteers that I know will stay and will come out, and they will still do the training because they love to do it. I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna do the training, I love to do it. I've been a, I've been a firefighter since nineteen ninety-eight, when I joined when I was sixteen years old. So I've been doing it ever since. Um, the, people do wanna volunteer, people do wanna help out, people will still come out. People will come out and get on the second truck, you know, uh, and people wanna be a part of it. But my ultimate fear is if something drastic happens, and then they come back and feel like, well, on this night, you had the chance to make a change, and we didn't do anything about it. And we're waiting two, three years for implementing that, um, it, it, it could. In my eyes, it, 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 it just looks bad, so.
Good point. Thanks for your twenty years. And for how much you care.
Uh, Adam Swazlowski, one thirty-nine Polo Drive, uh, been a volunteer in Montgomery Townships, uh, for probably the past seven years. I think I had my application submitted before I even moved here, uh, because I wanted to get, uh, back into it. But, uh, in Shammany Falls, um, I was the first one there for that fire, and we had two people on the truck that showed up for that, for that fire. Um, the truck that was actually able to get water on the fire came from Colmar. Um, so, you know, that, that was five thirty in the morning, uh, between five and five thirty, uh, so definitely not an ideal situation. Um, you know, it doesn't, fire doesn't pick what time it, it's gonna start, it can happen at any point in time. Um, it doesn't matter if it's five oh one, uh, when the career staff leave. Um, five oh one, we still need to get a crew, a full crew out on a fire truck. Um, Vina talks about burnout, I'm pretty close to being burnout, just the amount of time that we spend here, it's, I have a full-time job during the day. Uh, this is also basically a full-time job, based on the timer requirements that it, uh, takes to keep up with the training and the meetings and things like that. So, with that said, um, I think twenty-four seven is ideal, ideally the way to go, like immediately, like as soon as possible. Uh, the, I used to do the stipend kind of schedule prior to Bill. Um, at the end of twenty twenty-four, we may have had like one to two holes per month. Uh, we average like one to two holes per day now, trying to get the volunteers to pick up the stipend shifts. Um, so it's just, the whole thing is just getting more and more difficult to accomplish, so, that was all, thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Thanks for your seven years. And thanks for your comments from within. You know, Bill can tell us one thing as director, but it's nice to hear from some others that are, are within and, and seeing the holes and, and working, so appreciate that very much.
And live in the township.
Correct.
Okay, so what's our, what's our, what do you need from us tonight, Bill?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn that to the, to the, to the boss.
So what we're looking for tonight is not a vote, we're looking for consensus to move forward because budget, believe it or not, is gonna be coming up. I mean, summers when we start talking capital, when we start talking, that's why we were talking about the feasibility study. Um, we're looking that we can put these numbers into the proposed twenty twenty-six budget. And obviously with tonight, what was being said, the caveat that we come up with a plan to begin public outreach in whatever forms that's gonna look like, whether it's posts on Facebook, um, our podcast, our e-news, you know, putting data, I believe Mr. Guy, Mr., one, one of the residents said about putting it in, um, a form that people can understand. So like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna hit them with, the NFPA numbers are good to have to say, this is the standard. So we have, one of the things that the board wanted to see when we got here was to become the gold standard again. We wanna be the community that other people look at and say, well, come Montgomery's getting it done. And I know you all hear about it like from our public information side, I hear about it from the police side, you know, we had commendations tonight. So we will commit that, we will come up with a plan, we have great public information staff to help us. Um, but we have the connections. One of the things that, you know, the board asked when I got here was that we reconnect with the community, whether it's through the Chamber of Commerce, um, I'm on the VMSC board, there's, there's a reason for that. It's not because I have a lot of free time, it's because these connections matter. These connections, when something like this happens, matter to be able to get out in front of HOAs. I mean, we have so many HOAs and they want us to come to meetings, and I go at night, because they wanna hear what's going on in the township. So, those same connections, I can say, can you please reach out to your people and put this communication out to them? And that we're gonna have a meeting here at the township building, or, you know, to reach out to the Shammany Falls and say, we wanna use your brand new community building, which we all thought was wonderful and is now fully sprinkler, um, we wanna come and we wanna talk to people. But we wanna know, do we move forward with this for twenty twenty-six? Do we stall it? Do we scrap it? We just need to know what we're doing.
Well, the information, um, the information sessions are gonna give you the opportunity to get feedback from the community as well. It's not just a one-way communication.
Absolutely.
So, why wouldn't we then, you know, take that feedback into consideration in terms of which direction to go?
We can, it's just, this is a tough decision and this is a task to the board, you know, like, this isn't just a decision about do we or don't we put pickleball in a park? This is public safety, and, you know, maybe it's because I've been around it for so long, but I, you know, I've become sort of, where was I? I was in Bucks County, it was all about open space. Here, emergency services has become my sort of mantle, and I wanna make sure we do this right. So, we can certainly gather the information and, you know, if meetings that you're not at, we can report back to the board, but ultimately, you know, come September, we need to have some direction so that we know what we're doing for budget.
Light to at least put the numbers in for the budget. I think we have consensus that we want, we, we recognize the need to go, you know, ultimately to the twenty-four seven. I, 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 I'm not, I don't mean to speak for anybody else here. We have consensus, it's just the timing, and, um, whether or not it can be phased, um, to ease the burden on, um, our, our residents.
And I think that's a discussion I need to have with Bill first, to say, if, if in fact, the consensus comes back from residents and ultimately the board to phase it, how's he gonna do it and can he do it? Because it's, it's one thing to say our, our weekends are a weakness, but we're not gonna be able to hire full-time firefighters and say, oh, by the way, your permanent schedule is you're always working Saturday and Sunday. They're not gonna take the job here.
I'm, I'm just gonna say, I, I don't think we should phase it in. He's given us the plan that he wants, that gets us from over nine minutes to under five minutes. Two people that are within his operation, organization are telling us, they're residents here, this is what needs to be done. I, I honestly, let's put the word out, but I don't know a resident out there that's gonna say, oh yeah, sign me up for nine minutes. I, I just don't.
And I, I think my only, what I'm hearing from, uh, Chief and, and, um, the two volunteers is that, uh, more so from Chief though, that, that you, you don't think the phased approach will work.
I, I mean, the most, the, the phase, crew integrity is the most important thing in the fire service, right? Crew integrity, that's what we're all training, crew integrity. And that's, it's like, it's like a sports team. You're going in a burning building, everybody's gotta trust each other, everybody's gotta know everybody's move. People need to predict each other's move, people need to know that people's strengths and weaknesses. If you allow me to do the twenty-four, you know, the twenty-four seventy-twos with the four platoons at this time, we are creating that team cohesion. That's, that's amazing. If I'm, if, if you're telling me we gotta phase it, I'll do it, it's, it's, that's what you tell me to do, that's what I do, but, but then I worry about the same people aren't working together. Why our career staff is so good is because they work together every day, they know each other in and out. They're like that, that sports team that wins championships. We talked. We talked about stipend, when Vinay and I were doing stipend fifteen years ago, I was always Sunday nights. I knew my crew every Sunday night, it was the same, and Vinay was the same way. Now, we're like stipend mercenaries. We're just trying to get anybody to fill holes and those people aren't working together. The fire service isn't really something where you can just show up and say, completed training, get on the truck. Everybody has to have a job, everybody has to fill that up. We do so much training on crew integrity, knowing your riding position on the truck. Knowing strengths and weaknesses, and, and that's what I think will be best for us, and that's why I think. Not phasing it, but coming right out of the gate and building these team cohesions, just like a police squad. Where these guys who are now in an environment that is dangerous, that is smoky, that is hot, that is lights out, can work together and know each other. Every move can predict each other's move. I mean, crew resource management is one of the major things and Vinay works for the fire school. He could tell you how much influence or impactfulness crew resource management is having, but how much time we're spending even on the teaching side. Teaching people about crew resource management. So the more you know your team, the better you're gonna, the better your outcomes are gonna be.
People's homes are the most important thing they have. It's their retirement, it's, it's everything they have. It's the biggest financial decision and thing they have, their, their families, their pets. I, again, I, I, I don't know who would say, no, get to me slower. Um, I think on this. I, I will not vote to do it in a phased, um.
I think that having eight or nine additional members, full-time members will have an impact. And I think that our staff has the talent and creativity to do that. And, and protect our community effectively and ultimately, we will get to that twenty-four seven. Staffing, I mean, so, you know, we're not saying that we're not going to provide it long-term, it's just taking a phased approach. It's also easier to implement, and there's no full-time HR person included in this plan, which I think is a mistake. I think that's a huge burden that we're putting on our HR staff, and these are people who are going to have to feel. Um, you know, grievances and complaints, and that is not something that I think an HR intern is really equipped to.
We have a HR professional.
We have one, and you're increasing the burden on that person.
For, you know, there's one specifically for the fire department.
Well, she, the intern is, the intern was hired solely to work on this project, to update job descriptions, to create job descriptions. To get things ready so that when we go to testing, when we go to hire, we're in place. Um, Chris Willard is our full-time HR manager. She handles, and, um, knock wood, um, again, with the culture, um, we haven't had any grievances since we've been here. But you're. If you look at our labor attorney bill, it's.
You have a hundred employees right now, full-time employees in the townships, and so you're increasing staff by twenty percent. And you don't think you need additional resources in human resources to handle that additional workflow? I just don't think that's realistic. I really don't think that's realistic.
I'm all for the, uh. Information out there, let's make sure, we've always talked about communication to our public, but I'm not up for phasing. I say, let's, let's do what the professionals are telling us to, let's do what. Has been proven already in other departments to work.
Does anyone here want to have a fire next year when we're on the phase in? And our response time maybe is eight minutes? Unless, I don't, I mean, he's talking minutes that save lives, save pets, save your home from. Complete disaster. In four minutes, they can get there and save your home and your photo albums and your christening dress that's hanging in your closet. You know, like, those are the things that people don't think about until they've been in a fire and have lost those things. I think it has to be all. All at once. Uh, if Carolyn feels that she needs to hire another HR person to deal with this, well, then that's one more salary. And it's not gonna be that big of a bump when we're already taking a tax increase.
Would it be feasible for us to have two options for them to, whoops, that's my phone. Um, two options for people to assess. My husband's probably wondering where I am. Sorry about that. Would it be feasible for us to have two different options? Whoops, he's calling back again. Would it be feasible for us to have two different options for us to assess? You know, have, have a phased-in option as well as that, so that way, when we're going to these informational, um. Uh, events, that we be able to put those two things in front of people and say, well, what, what would you like? At least they would have the option to see.
Their decision. Uh, I, and what I mean by that, what I mean by that is that we, I'm saying, I'm thinking we just need to. Get the information out because this is what we are planning to do. So, you know, that, that's the, that's the, that's what the goal should be. The information session should be just that. This is to share with you why there will be a tax increase, unfortunately. You know, we already know that's gonna occur again, whether it's in one year or one, two year, one, two and three. Um, we need to get that information out. I, I don't think we should go into a meeting and say, here's your two choices. And you decide what should be done, because it's Bill as the, you know, our, our chief that is sharing with us. This is what he. He needs in order to make sure we have the safety within our township.
And we are here to keep the residents and the businesses safe.
And we're also here to represent their needs financially, and this, yeah, this does have a financial impact on.
All of us.
And, and many of, uh, and many of whom are on fixed incomes and lower, lower socioeconomic. Yes, we are overall an affluent township, but we heard directly from residents who are very concerned about. The impact and whether or not they're gonna have to choose whether or not to pay their tax bill or buy their, um, their prescription medications. So this is, you know, I just think that if we can make this a little financially easier and still arrive at the same destination. Um, that we should give more serious consideration to that, or at least. You know, could we push back and say, let's not make a decision right now, and could you come back and present us with a scenario that might be workable? And I think that's a lot to ask, given what we're asking of the entire community.
I just wanna add one more thing, uh, um, uh. Just hearing, hearing everything, I do understand the whole, the, the whole financial burden and, and all that, uh, trust me, I do. To try to, for me personally, to try to transition it to ha- ha- uh, staggering it out by hiring over the number of years. Just in over, just from me thinking financial overtime cost. Are gonna be out.
Paid another way.
Way over what you expect. Uh, because it's gonna start off Saturday, Sunday, and then it's gonna be, okay, some nights and stuff like that. Our stipend shift starts at ten PM, crew staff ends at five PM. Sometimes we can be, that five to seven is a hard time. We may not get. The chiefs are usually around, our chief's shift starts at six, we go from six to six. Um, but it's hard to get a truck out between that time, but if the crew doesn't get to the station till ten PM. That's five hours now, that is, might not be a truck to get out. You know, and now, do you wanna see? Northland Fire Company, Callmark Fire Company, Hilltown Fire Company putting a fire out at your house? That the taxpayers are paying and they're seeing other departments come out, the first in truck. To put the fire out. Earlier, you had mentioned about people, uh, uh, people coming back to the township, if you do stagger it. Um, there are so many departments now that are hiring, and those jobs are filling up so quickly. Years ago, when I applied to, to, to become a career firefighter, you'd have a hundred people or more show up for these testings. Okay, I tested in Norristown, uh, back in the early two thousands, there, there was close to fifty or sixty people. When I was doing the testings, when I worked at Bucks County Community College, fifteen to twenty. You know, the number of people have drastically dropped for applying, and if we keep on waiting. Though, that number's gonna also continue to drop as well. One of our members went to, um, Myrtle Beach Fire Department, got a job down there. All they ask is that you have firefighter one, firefighter two, EMT. You didn't need to be a paid firefighter somewhere else. You could be a volunteer, come in with those three classes. Do the testing real quick and then do three weeks of on-the-job training. And you're a Myrtle Beach, this is City of Myrtle Beach firefighter. And now, so we're training all these people and they're all gonna leave and not gonna have anyone to come and come back. If you're living in Myrtle Beach, you wanna come back to Montgomery Township for another job to be a firefighter?
So, so just to clarify, again, I'm not saying, um, I'm not supportive of, uh, this move. Uh, what I'm saying is that, yes, I think that we should, we should evaluate phasing it, and I'd love to see those numbers. If you think that's gonna cost, uh, you know, like overtime and that maybe there isn't really as much of a differential in terms of the overall financial impact. I would love to see those numbers to be able to, to make, uh, you know, a sound decision. But in terms of, you know, the salary that we're proposing to, I, I, I use my contacts at Monca Works. Uh, to do some salary comparisons, and we're going to be offering a very competitive wage. Um, so I think that's also going to factor in to our ability to recruit, and I'll share this with everybody on here. So that you have access to it, but, you know, the, the salaries that we have outlined in here are, are going to help us recruit effectively. To fill these roles, whether it's in year one or year two or maybe year three. So I, I, I do think that we'll be well-positioned, you know, to recruit effectively.
Well, I will say one more time, I do not wanna be the person sitting on the board when we get the complaint from someone who. Had a fire in year one or two, when we could have put this plan in place on day one. There's gonna be someone that will look back at this and feel that we did not serve our residents. I don't wanna be that person. I want a full, complete department if something happens to my home, any of my clients who have moved here. Any of my family, my friends, anyone on the board, any of us sitting in here.
As another option for people that do have financial issues, we could possibly consider some sort of rebate program. Um, which they do for the school, school taxes, things like that. I'm just trying to come up with an idea of that would make, make it. Feasible for people that truly can't afford. Um, that, that maybe they would be willing to do five or ten dollars, but they can't do thirty or whatever it is per month. Uh, I'm, I'm, Jo- John, you're saying you can't do that?
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of any, under the Tax Enabling Act, to just come up with a, a tax rebate program unless there's a certain program run. For specific instance through the Commonwealth, I, I don't think you'd be able to come up.
Okay, I wasn't sure. There may have to be something like that, that's brought, you know, maybe we would be the first in the, in the Commonwealth, but. The issue being is that this is, this is not something that's unique to Montgomery Township. Um, fire service issues are, were probably the top conversation that happened at our, our, our statewide meeting. Uh, last month, and, um, this is something that people are coming up with, well, how can we have regional coverage or mutual aid? Like, they're coming up with, because they truly, it's a collapsing industry, because the time has changed, and that's why we need to spread the. The information that what was happening in the even ten, fifteen years ago is not what we have right now in terms of volunteers. For, uh, a- and aren't we lucky that we live in a great community that has services, but it, we can't keep this up. At the rate, at the rate we're going. So this is where we need to know, Vinay, you just talked about overtime. That is something like, when you're calculating what the costs are, we need to put those things on the table so everyone understands that. We have to do something drastic, and maybe it's one year, maybe it's two years, but the issue being is that we can't, we will not be able to provide the services needed. As is right now. So this is a crisis throughout the state and the country. Um, and we are not alone in this, but we do need to make some really significant changes. But information is what people need because they don't know what we know, like, we all here are now learning al- along what you've. Been able to provide us, and I still don't know enough. That's why I think this information is so critical to get out, so people don't say. Oh, look what they're doing in Montgomery, that's excessive. A- and maybe come up with some, some creative ways to make it easier for people that truly will have partnerships with that.
And I do think, and I do think that the information piece of it is huge to get out, but I, I think it's a two-pronged approach. We still move forward. But we get the information out at the same time, because we know this is where we need to move to. We know that, that's what we already know. That's a fact.
Yes.
Chief has already agreed, has, has proven it to be a fact. I mean, what the information they have provided is clear to me that we've gotta do something different. Ten minutes does not work. That does not work. Um, so, you know, if this is the answer, I'm not saying if. To me, this is the answer, this is the answer, it's just a matter of when, and so sooner rather than later. Sounds a little better in that, and then we, we work on, we collectively board. And with chief, with every, and we get it out, talk it up with everyone, hey, yes, our taxes are gonna go up, but here's why.
And start with, the taxes are going up, then people will come. They wanna know, they'll, they'll say, we'll be able to provide them the information.
Yeah, it wouldn't even be, uh, I, I think that would be, if you open up or, or put it out on Facebook and say, we're having an information meeting on why. Our taxes are about to increase. That alone is gonna make me, I would have walked in, I mean, that was the thing with the school board. I, I initially, I have no children, so I. That, that wasn't as important for me, but once I had more information, it then, okay, I see what they're trying to do here. This is for, you know, the, the other children, all the other children in our, and, you know, children down the line, so. Um, safety, how, how do you measure, put a financial price on safety or when you do it? What, how do you, how do you do that?
You can't. I think you can, actually. I mean, I think that that's what we have to talk, we have to talk the numbers and what, what the impact is. Um, about delaying response, what happens.
I think we've been lucky.
Yeah.
I think we've been very lucky. And, um, so, uh, honestly, until, you know, all of this information being shared months ago and that this was coming along. I, I don't know that I knew, I mean, you know, I know I didn't know that, you know, we were kind of really. We've got two folks sitting here saying, I'm tired.
Yeah, and there's holes in the schedule.
And there's holes that they try to figure out, that's, that, that's weighing heavy on me, yeah.
And the holes are safety issues at the end of the day, and for our own people, for our own fire department, that becomes an issue of safety for them. That are working the fires then as well.
Truly.
So Bill, what happens if we do nothing? Then this takes another year to get implemented.
What he's been doing.
That's, I mean, we've been band-aiding it for twenty years, um, I just think that it's getting a lot worse. I mean, there, every, throughout, throughout, I guess, Vinay and I's. We've been here a long time, it's co- it's ebb and flows, sometimes we do, I mean, there were weekends when it was only two people around the whole weekend, you know. And, but it's not, it always came back, it hasn't come back, and it's just significantly decreasing. Um, and I, I can't get it to come back, I, and I've been able to, not to kinda out analogy, give it CPR and it's good for a little bit. And we've tried everything, I mean, federal grants, local stuff, we're still working with the school district. But we're paying people to come to calls, we're paying people to get training, they still don't care. Like, they just wanna come when it's convenient for them, and unfortunately. You know, our fires, he asked when our fires was, we had a fire during a Friday night Phillies playoff game, you know, like. The fire doesn't care that the Phillies are in the playoffs, the fires don't care that we don't have good coverage, I mean. I, I wouldn't have referred to the Shammany Falls fire, but Adam did. We wouldn't have even had a truck there if John Schuyer didn't come in to work early that day. We had two people on the first-out engine on squad eighteen, it was a volunteer who couldn't drive and John. If John didn't come in to work at four forty-five every day, uh, we would have nobody around from the time. The duty chief gets off at six. From the time the duty chief gets off at six, to the time the career staff get in at seven, nobody, I mean, if.
And even though they, they lost their entire structure, thank you God, nobody was in that building.
I mean, Adam and I got there first and I went in, because we were worried somebody was in the gym, because the door was unlocked. But again, like, crew resource, two in, two out, none of that existed in the first forever minute, and. Really, the saving grace, the way Colmar and Lancel got there so quickly was that they were already out on the street on another call. If they had to come from their house to get in the truck to come to Montgomery Township. I mean, the results wouldn't have changed, there's nothing left, but, um, you know, I, I don't know if, in that case. Saying that our response had an impact, because looking at the videos, interviewing people who said they smelled smoke eight-thirty the night before. Looking at the police videos of, and when Adam got there, you were the first arriving chief, you reported smoke and, and the attic space was open, it was all wood. I don't know, in that case, I think, but, but like you said, we got lucky. If that was somebody's house, I mean, we had a fire on July fifth, uh, and the kids brought fireworks into the home. And uh, burned a hole, remember that night, burned the stairwell, to the, they were all in the basement and they burned the stair landing. And they put a hole between where they could get out of the basement, I mean, if that happened this weekend, I, I, I don't know if we, it wouldn't be good. It wouldn't be good.
Enough said, thanks for all this time.
Thank you, thanks for hearing me.
All right, are we good? Um, okay, item number nineteen, new business, department reports anything, the department heads to us, anything from us to the department? All those are favor.